Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. This is Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, and this is being held via teleconference. We have, all commissioners are present, so we have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. Do we have any planning commission or announcements? Anybody would like to speak to any items right now? Okay. At this time, I'll open it up for public comment. This will be for items, generally this is for items not on the agenda and also for the consent calendar. Public will have three minutes to speak. So is there, do we have anybody in the queue?
No, at this time, we don't have anybody with their hands raised.
Okay, great. Then we'll move on from public comment. So this is item A1 and A2, the consent calendar. Does any commissioner wish to pull any of these items or have any comments on the consent calendar? Okay, do I have somebody who'd like to make a motion? Come on, Jesse.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, see you then, we'll call the vote on it if you would, Scott?
Sure. Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Graffia?
Aye.
Chair Luer?
Yes. Motion passed as 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, this next item is item number B1. It's the public hearing for the zoning ordinance text amendment. It's a municipal code amendment for the vacation rental ordinance. But do we have any ex parte communications before we get started on this? Okay. I had a phone call from a member of the community that wished that the reporting and the, that they would know what happens when they file a complaint and if it could get reported back to them as far as if there was any resolution or if any action was taken or if it was even received. They feel like they're, they're just talking to brick walls sometimes, so if, don't want to pass that on? Okay, so.
I also had some ex parte, it was an email, and I believe we're going to get to it anyway, but just if anybody was curious.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I guess, do we have a staff report on this, Scott, or?
We do, I have a presentation for the planning commission and has some of the exhibits and things that were in the staff report, so I'm going to, I'll share my screen right now, okay?
Okay.
Okay, let's, huh, doesn't share the, I'm gonna go back just to the regular version. Interesting why it does that. Okay. Anyway, we'll just do it this method. So we're going to give a continued review of the draft short-term vacation rental ordinance that was continued from your previous meeting on August 18th of this year, so two weeks ago. At that meeting, the planning commission took public comment, you then closed the public hearing and commenced deliberations on the ordinance. You got through about the first, I think, seven-ish pages of it, I think stopping right around when we got to the item related to the cap and we stopped there and given the late hour, you continued the item, the review of the ordinance to today's meeting. So direction that was provided at the meeting by the planning commission, the first item was that the planning commission requested a revision to the second whereas in the ordinance to include the word quality in front of character. You requested that we reduce the short-term rental cap from 250 to 150. You requested that we allow unlimited home shares, meaning hosted short-term rentals, and that those home share or hosted SDRs not count against the cap. You also requested that we not count SDRs in commercial zones toward the cap. You requested we come back with some additional information, I have slides on that and you do have that information in your staff report. The first one was to provide the number of existing home share rentals in town and then provide the number of ADUs that are currently used as short-term rentals. And then you requested that we provide additional exhibits for buffers in the 150 and 175 range and those are also in your staff report and I have an exhibit that shows those. As for the number of hosted SDRs, we have approximately 40 currently licensed and then we have 11 ADUs also licensed as short-term rentals currently. This is a slide that shows on the left-hand side with the green circles, buffers at 150 feet and then on the right-hand side in that sort of purplish color, you see them at 175 feet. The planning commission also had a discussion related to how we do the distance separations between SDRs and suggested that maybe we not look at a number of lots, meaning in the current ordinance, the highlighted section there says we're going to separate them by three in a linear fashion, and the planning commission discussed ideas surrounding a linear distance again instead of counting the lots and that was at one, bring them back and show you at 150 and 175. And so we did that and we did it in different areas of town so you can see what that looked like in just different configurations based on where they might be located within the city. The first one is in the Beast Track on Dorar Streets. You see in the image on the left is going three lots in a linear fashion and then the image on the right is 150 feet. And you see that it goes out in a linear fashion, three lots on the left and it only goes out two in this particular track in town because these lots tend to be wider than they are deep. When we expand that linear distance to 175 feet in this same location, it still only goes out two lots in either direction, just based on how the lot configurations are in this portion of town. Looking at North Morro Bay on Penay Street, again, left image is the, shows it going out three lots in either direction and the right image is 150 feet and that shows in that track because they're narrow lots, deeper than they are wide, you see it going out four lots in that neighborhood. If you expand to the 175 linear distance, it goes out five in that location. Moving on to, again, still in sort of North Morro Bay but off of San Jacinto, have some unique lot configurations there, so on the left you see it going out three lots in either direction and expands several blocks because those lots and those streets tend to only be one lot wide. And then if you only go out 150 feet on the right, you see that it only goes over two lots because there's streets in between those. If you expand that to 175, it doesn't change, again, because you have the lots plus you have streets in that configuration. And then we take a look at Marina Street and you see on the left, if you have the three lots configuration on the right, on the left and then on the right, you have 150 feet, which equates to three lots on either side because most of those lots in that track are 50 feet wide. If you expand it to 175, you pick up another lot on each side, so you go four out on Marina Street on the image on the left. Certainly we can bring these back up, you know, as the discussion progresses this evening. Also wanted to note that not only did the planning commission review the draft short-term rental ordinance two weeks ago, but also our T-Bid Board, Turgeon Business Improvement District Advisory Board also reviewed it and they made some recommendations and I thought I would share those with the planning commission this evening because they might, you know, raise points for discussion later. The first one is that the T-Bid Board wasn't interested in moving forward the idea that after three years, we're going to go through a lottery process to remove all non-conforming vacation rentals. They thought that, you know, letting it naturally take its course and going through a grandfathering process, you know, through attrition, meaning it's non-conforming and you can't transfer it to anybody else and you can't sell it with a lot, but as these sort of go away over time, because we have about 15 to 20% turnover per year, that that would be an adequate method to get us down to the cap number and then having the short-term rentals dispersed in the patterns that we dictate in the ordinance. They also brought up an idea that the planning commission hasn't yet discussed, but that was to exclude apartments from the STR permit requirement, thinking, hey, these are, you know, apartments are what accounts for affordable and workforce housing in town and we probably shouldn't have them be short-term rentals. And so they said, well, we have existing non-conforming ones, once the ordinance is adopted, we'll just follow that three-year process that we have for the ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and they'll term out at the end of three years. So that was their recommendation. They took a look at the cap, they had heard what the planning commission said about setting it at 150. The ordinance has it at 200, they kind of split it in half and are suggesting 175. They also, similar to the planning commission, are not interested in having the home share or hosted count towards the cap, nor are they interested in having the short-term rentals in the commercial zones count towards the cap. Other than that, they recommended the remainder of the draft ordinance as reviewed by the Short-Term Rental Committee to counsel for adoption. With that, I'll just remind you what you're doing this evening and that would be you're going to continue your review from where we left off last time and will be, you know, your recommendation to counsel would be to repeal Chapter 5.47, which is where the current vacation rental ordinance lives, and replace it with the draft ordinance that's in front of you this evening, which is found in Chapter 1741 or will be found, and to forward any other recommendations you have for revisions to the ordinance to counsel as well. With that, I can stop sharing my screen and we'd be happy to answer questions moving forward. Also, I think you might want to have a discussion, because we've had a lot of interest and you received over the last several days, a significant amount of correspondence, you know, it would be my suggestion that you consider opening up the public hearing again and allowing some additional public comments, just in case folks weren't necessarily aware that we were going through this process and just more recently became aware. In any regard, I think that there's a lot more interest now and so maybe we open it back up. We do have all that correspondence, you've seen it, you've probably read most of it. Maybe we open it back up and we just have a reduced, you know, comment period of maybe like one minute per person or something so we can at least hear from folks and then move forward, but that's certainly, certainly up to the commission to make that decision.
Okay. At this point, let's, if we have any questions for the staff and then I do believe we'll just do a one-minute comment, public comment period and we'll see how that goes, we'll see how many people we have in the queue. So Jesse, I saw that you had your hand raised.
I do have a question about the grandfathering and the lottery. Would it be possible to, what's the word here, delay that decision until the three years has passed and decide if a lottery is even necessary?
So if you removed the requirement, which is again what the T-Bid Board is recommending, the city could pick this up at that time, three years from now or when we adopt it and implement it, or when it actually comes back from Coastal Commission, I guess, and we could review it then and we could see how many are left and then the council could decide whether they wanted to make an amendment to the ordinance to pick that up. So that is certainly something that could take place, you know, and it wouldn't be any different than us, I mean, it would take a little bit of time because we have to amend the ordinance, so maybe we look at it at two and a half years, but other than that, I think it would be, we're just fine that way as well.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Scott, I have one then. On the, if you could clarify for me, on the home, the home share, the hosting, and then also on the commercial properties, are they going to be required to have a permit and have inspections and also basically be able to be tracked and recorded?
Those are really the operational requirements in the code and they apply to all short-term rentals, hosted or not, and so yes, all the, again, operational requirements that apply to regular SDRs apply to hosted ones as well.
Okay, and the commercial sites also?
Correct, I'm sorry, yes, and the commercial site.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions? Okay, see you then, let's, we'll open this up for public comment and do we have anybody in the queue? Quick.
Yes, we do. We have three hands currently raised. Let me go ahead and click on Ashley Thomas, just a moment. Okay, Ashley, you are live.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I had a question in regards to the short-term vacation rental permitting process and the cap and everything being changed going forward. This is more in regards to people that have the permit that really want to rent their property as much as possible to make as much money as possible because it's a business versus will there be any allowance for hosts that possibly want to rent maybe just once a month for discretionary income?
Okay. We'll take the rest of public comment and then we'll come back to the questions. So thanks for that, Ashley, we'll hang on and we'll go through that when we, after public comment. So do we have another speaker?
Yes, we do, yes, we do. Chair, Harry Weiss, I believe, I'm going to go ahead and bring him up now, just a moment. Okay, Harry, you are live.
Okay, hello again, you can hear me, I hope.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm a short-term vacation rental owner in, on Beach Comer and we've owned that for 15 years plus and we'd, I think the grandfathering methodology, or some variant of that, the T-Bid recommendations there, I think that would be a profitable way to some sort of lottery, which is what I heard also as a topic of discussion, and so I just want to advocate for that methodology going forward.
Okay, great. Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other, do we have another speaker?
Yeah, yes, we do, just a moment. Okay, we have a phone caller with the last three digits, 327.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, this is Dan Sedley of Morro Bay. I have, I have a question and a comment. My question and deep concern is that no, no one seems to know the telephone number to file complaints about short-term vacation rentals that are not meeting expectations in terms of noise, in terms of building fire pits, and in terms of being just flat illegal and operating anyway, of which, of which I see numerous of them still operating and I, nor anybody in my neighborhood that I can find, seems to know a complaint telephone number to call. I've heard it said by the owner-operators that there aren't very many complaints, well, part of that easily could be that nobody knows the phone number to complain to and the police don't seem exactly appropriate to do that. My other, my other comment is that I would, I would support 125 on a full short-term vacation rentals due to the size of our town being as small as it is, our city being as small as it is. I think to preserve the quality and character of our neighborhoods, 125 would be a more appropriate number than the numbers that are being talked about. Thank you.
Okay, Dan, thank you very much. Next, please.
All right, next on the queue, I have Betty Winholz. Okay, Betty, you are live.
Thank you, this is Betty Winholz. I hope that you have read and will refer to the questions I asked in my written submittal. I want to say that I've read through the other public comments and obviously someone did a small campaign this weekend encouraging people who rent or own rentals to write into you and hopefully you'll put those in the perspective of those of us who live here. And certainly the majority seemed to have the impression that we were getting rid of rentals, which we're not, and so I hope that that question will be put at ease for them regarding that. The question I asked about producing the map is because I believe people may not be aware that they are in a mixed-use area and therefore they're going to be in an unlimited, unhoseded area. And I think that needs to be looked at to see if that mixed-use area actually encompasses some residential neighborhoods that might need higher protection that we think that they do. So I have a concern that with unlimited hosted, unlimited and mixed-use commercial areas plus the 150, that makes for a lot of rentals and I think that kind of then echoes Mr. Sedley's comment that we don't, this town maybe cannot or should not support that many and I think that needs to be looked at. And then conjunction with that is my concern about when all of this takes effect, because many people complain now that there is no enforcement yet or minimal and that if this has to go through, and we know that it does, through the council, then through the Coastal Commission, and then it doesn't take effect for another three years past that, that's a long time for us to be patient and wait for things to change. So I hope that you'll look at that length of time and have things, I think even one of your correspondences was from a person that said they thought it should happen within a 12-month period, so thank you.
Could you please conclude?
Excuse me?
Could you please conclude? We're only.
Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, Chair, next on the queue, we have Kristen Hedlund.
Okay. Just for point of reference, how many people do we have in the queue? Do you have any idea? Okay.
I am seeing seven hands raised currently.
Okay, great.
Okay, Kristen, you are live.
Hi, my name is Kristen Hedlund. Thank you, commission, planning commissioners and staff. I've lived in North Morro Bay for 30 years. I listened to the last planning commission and I would like to quickly state that I think that the three-year waiting period is way too long. I think it should be no longer than two years. I think enforcement is very important. This weekend, we had a problem as we have vacation rental in my neighborhood where people tend to come in late at night and they were sitting on a second-story deck talking for a long time. Also, I'm concerned about the distance between homes and I'd like to have it at at least 175 linear feet. Those are my questions and concerns and I want to thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please.
Okay, next on the queue, Chair, we have Robert Elzer. Okay, Robert, you are live.
Hello, Robert Elzer here. Thank you for taking my comments. I'd like to discuss a little bit about the human cost, if there is an action taken that significantly reduces the number of licenses, takes licenses away from current license holders. Some of these plans, you know, many dozens of homeowners could be affected, many of those homeowners have dreams of retiring to those homes and that could have a very negative impact on those dreams. You know, there's a lot of people that work in the vacation rental space, we have housekeepers, we have maintenance personnel, we have employees of management companies. If some of these more harsh ideas come to pass, you know, those people could be looking at a loss of jobs, a reduction in work, all those people have families and employees to support. We talked last time about the loss of income to the city and I think the comment was made, well, it's just money. It is just money, but money does have a human cost. The city has been challenged with layoffs and furloughs and that money goes to fund those employees and they provide critical services to the city. My last point is, you know, has the standard of, has the burden of proof really been shown that vacation rentals cause that much damage to justify all these harsh actions with the dozens of job losses and the impact to homeowners? In my opinion, I think you need a higher burden of proof before you can start taking things away from people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Next, please.
All right, Chair, next we have Don Fuerberg. Okay, Don, you are live. Don, are you there? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm standing by waiting for Don.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, so, hi, thank you, sorry for that difficulty. I have three main points and one of them is about home hosted and I was wondering if you could take into consideration because of COVID and the loss of jobs, a lot of us here who are home hosted Airbnbs have really lost a lot of income and it's a source that can help a lot of our community members. I wish you would take the stance of San Luis Obispo, which allows an unlimited amount of home hosted Airbnbs and if you, you know, you're talking about 12 months to two years out before all these ordinances are passed, I'd really appreciate if you would separate home hosted and pass that sooner, pass those ordinances sooner so that home hosted could get back to hosting and also consider that some of the restrictions and regulations be different for home hosted. You know, some people just rent a bedroom, one of the bedrooms, so I'm not really sure how that's going to be regulated. And then lastly, I'm just a bit confused if somebody could answer the question about the, you know, the 175 feet, linear feet, does that also include home hosted or are you more concerned about the people renting their house out completely for the weekend? So I hope that was clear, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please.
All right, next on the queue is Charles Close. Okay, Charles, you are live.
We have a home on Beach Comer, actually the last, the house next to last at the end of the street. We've owned it for over 30 years and we've been using it as a vacation rental for 15 to, 10 to 15 years. And I'm not sure that I've ever had a complaint and if I had one, I wouldn't know where to find it, so that would be very useful to know where those are. But we are really isolated in the sense the ocean is on almost three sides of us and it doesn't make a lot of sense to us that we would be thrown into any kind of a screening system that depends on distance or anything like that since you hear the ocean more than anything else out there. The other thing I'd like to say is that Robert Elzer, I would like to second everything he said. It's exactly the right thing to say. We've contributed to at least $10,000 in taxes through the TOT. We've provided jobs, we have. We've provided jobs, we have a local, uh, local cleaner, uh, and we, uh, use all the services and products that come from Morro Bay. So we do contribute significantly to, uh, the economy.
Besides the guests, too.
Oh, one more thing, I, if I have owned it, our guests are repeat people. They think that they own that home and every summer they want there one week. So if we were to take that away from, they would really be disappointed.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Charles.
Thank you.
Uh, next, please.
All right, Chair, just to let you know, I see, uh, five, uh, hands, uh, raised hands left on the queue.
Okay.
The next speaker is Wally Arubak. Okay, Wally, you are live. Wally, are you there?
How's that? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, sorry about that. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, my name is Wally Arubak, I own a home at 3200 Beach Comer Drive. I submitted a few letters through this process starting in 2018 and in spite of some others submitting very similar comments regarding going slowly and basing policy on real data rather than emotion, I've yet to hear anyone on the planning commission talk about any of those comments. And, uh, in this particular packet, you have quite a few comments that are consistent. I'd be eager to hear something to know that those comments from me and more than just me are being heard, but I don't want to go through those again, I want to bring up something different and that is enforcement. How are you going to pay for it? In the last meeting, staff was asked if they had developed any plans for how they would structure and pay for the VR regulation program. They stated they hadn't. I didn't see anything in the staff report addressing that topic. If you're going to take these regulations and enforcement of regulations seriously, you're going to need people dealing with permits, management of permits, record-keeping. The less you invest in code compliance, the more you're going to need on the citizenry to monitor what's going on and that doesn't feel like you're actually trying to solve the problem. So my question to you is, where's the money going to come from, from 150 permit holders to do proper code enforcement? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next comment, please.
Okay, next speaker is Maggie Jaren. Okay, Maggie, you are live.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, just a quick, and this is to address, uh, something the gentleman said earlier. I just want everybody to be aware that, um, we own Beach and Bay Getaways, but we've taken it upon ourself to create a website and the website is sharamorobay.com. And again, because the city does not provide this information, we have taken it upon ourself to try to keep a fairly accurate list of all licensed vacation rentals, which we hope will help the city as a whole to be able to know if that, that house down the block that's causing the ruckus is actually a licensed vacation rental or an ill, we don't, we won't know if it's illegal or a second home, but we have made that available to the public. And you will also find on there, uh, many other interesting articles about this. We care very much and I'm strong, a strong advocate of the part of the, um, the proposed ordinance that says that there will be signs in people's yards and that will be required that gives a contact number because I really do feel the community's pain with not knowing where to report these problems. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Maggie.
Okay, Chair, next on the queue, we have Mike Fackler. Okay, Mike, you are live.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, I just wanted to say I do own, uh, short-term rental. Um, as many before me have mentioned, I have no knowledge of any complaints. I do use Beach and Bay as a licensed management system to manage our property. And frankly, without the revenue from the management property, I couldn't afford to have the, the location. Um, when we did purchase it, we did the remodels and all that money was spent locally, put over $100,000 in that property and that was all spent minors and other local places. And I'm just curious, if I'm doing the math right, at 250, that's less than 4% of the total house count in Morro Bay and it just seems like this is a huge problem for 4% of the houses in the city and it just seems like tracking and locating who the, um, bad renters are is a problem. And I do know in San Luis, they're for college rentals, they have a way to track and locate and, um, penalize landlords that have properties that are out of compliance and I would suggest maybe going after out of compliance properties first instead of just a blanket removal of an arbitrary number. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mike.
All right, next on the queue, we have E-Star or I-Star. Standby. Okay, E-Star, you are live.
Hi, my name is, uh, Ian Starkey, I'm the owner of Rockstar Properties here in Morro Bay. I do, uh, both, uh, long-term property management and vacation rental management. Um, I want to second what Robert Elzer had said about the real person, human cost. Um, I know of, uh, dozens of people who rely on the revenue sources from the vacation rentals ourselves that we supply to them. Um, the second item I would like to bring up is I think a, a large public campaign needs to be done to inform neighbors of the difference between a second home where significant family and friends uses it compared to a licensed vacation rental. I think there's a large community misunderstanding. As a local property manager, I get a call once a week from somebody who wants to run their home as a vacation rental that is not licensed and I know they continue to run them illegally, um, in that sense. So I just want to say a reduction in rentals of arbitrary number, I feel will, uh, reduce city revenue and there is no, um, money to increase for enforcement. So, um, those quick items, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Chair, just so you know, we do have, uh, five more raised hands on the queue right now. I'm bringing up Michelle.
Okay.
Okay, Michelle, you are live.
Um, hello, city council members. Uh, this is Michelle Lester-Cateray, I'm up over on Trinidad Street and I have been privy to having an illegal, uh, Airbnb or vacation rental next to me. They were closed down, but there now is quote or claiming that, uh, it's all their family and friends that are using it on a continual basis, um, with a housekeeper coming in and cleaning it every other day so that new people can come in and out. Um, you know, this is the problem that the city is going to deal with, is those that aren't going to get their license, they're going to rent it out and they'll just get paid under the table, one way or another. Um, the other issue is smoking, um, on the property, inside and out. You know, people are rolling in and out of the property, they're partying, uh, they're smoking and increasing, you know, what they do and there's cigarette butts everywhere. Um, perfect example, there were people next door this last weekend and there's cigarette butts all over the street. Uh, they tend to bring their pets with them and they leave their pets while they, you know, take off to the beach and there's a dog barking inside the house or there's a bark, dog barking outside the house. Um, you know, the other big thing is wood burning fire pits. A lot of, you know, California is currently burning and we have these fire pits that are literally, uh, you know, 10 feet away from an adjacent home because we're so close to each other in North Morro Bay. Um, I know some people do put in, uh, crystal pits and I think it might be a good idea that the city, you know, possibly ban or outlaw wood burning fire, uh, pits. Um, otherwise, thank you and I appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you very much, Michelle.
All right, next on the queue is Jack Randall. Okay, Jack, you are live.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
All right, I would also like to, uh, advocate for incremental change based on data, uh, that we implement, uh, changes, collect data, see how there's improvement, you know, next year implement some more changes, uh, instead of big, huge radical changes, especially when we're doing a lot of stuff without real data. As a lot of callers have mentioned, there isn't, doesn't seem to be a good process for, uh, reporting complaints nor is there any enforcement to go out and, uh, supply us with the data to, to, to see how much of these complaints are, uh, illegal rentals versus, uh, professionally managed, uh, rentals. Uh, I myself have a vacation rental, it's professionally managed by Beach and Bay and, uh, we also don't have any complaints, uh, that I'm, that I'm aware of. Uh, we do a great job of reaching out to the neighbors and being very conscientious of, uh, running that in a way that, um, the neighborhood is, is not bothered. Also, want to point out that it, the, so the city has, um, the, the city has programs to encourage tourism and, uh, and the coastal commission also wants there to be access to, to our beautiful beaches and coastline. Uh, and I, I think that these policies should, uh, try to stay in alignment with the, with the city and the coastal commission goals. So if we are going to severely limit the number of, of permits for, uh, non-hosted, uh, complete homes, um, uh, I think we need to make sure that those, those permits are actually being used, that they're, that they're active in, in one way or another. Uh, because there are people that are holding them simply to create a 150, 200-foot buffer, whatever the, the buffer amount is going to be if there's a buffer around their home.
Okay, Jack, could I, could you please, uh, finish up here? I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so, uh, I would just advocate to, um, uh, try to make sure that there are active permits, uh, that are working towards the city and coastal commission goals and I advocate for, uh, the existing permits being grandfathered, that's fair and let attrition, uh, work its way out.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Chair, next on the queue is Linda Rieger. Here we, here we go. Linda, you are live. Linda, are you there?
I'm mute. Hi? Hello?
Hello, go ahead, please.
Okay, sorry about that. I wanted to reiterate, um, what Robert Elzer had said about the cost that it's going to be on people and that's not just the people who are employed, like the housekeepers and the window washers and the gardeners, um, but the extended financial burden it's going to put on Morro Bay, especially during a time when we've all experienced a lot of financial hardships and it does tend to have a domino effect. Um, my husband and I, um, have a home that we rent out for about six months of the year as a short-term rental and the other time we are there. So we watch the other homes on the street and, you know, we are, we feel very much like we're a part of Morro Bay, even though for some of the year we do rent it out and we both think it's a real tragedy that they're simply wanting to penalize people based on a landmark as well as, you know, their number in line as to when they got their, their permits. Um, a lot of those people, including ourselves, bought our homes with the understanding that we could rent it and it would make living in Morro Bay for part of the year a financial reality. Um, I also wanted to, uh, emphasize especially to the woman who was talking about smoking, if you look, the majority of homes don't allow smoking, they don't allow pets and they do not allow fire pits. So chances are hers is an illegal, the one that's near her, and I think that that's really where the emphasis should be before they start making all these other decisions on how, um, to cut things back.
Okay, thank you very much, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair, for our last, uh, raised hand in the queue for public comment, it is DeeDee. Okay, DeeDee, you are live.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, I also am an owner in Morro Bay and I fully agree what Robert said. I think we should be grandfathered in, we do spend money in Morro Bay and we also bought it with the understanding we're going to rent it, but that's like our future retirement home, that we'll be living there and spending a lot more time once we retire.
Okay, thank you very much, DeeDee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Chair, that is, uh, that is all I see for raised hands in the queue.
All right, great then, we'll close, close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Um, so Scott, uh, did you want to go through some of the comments and, and, uh, comment them, correct them or give them a little more information?
Okay, we, go back to the beginning here, hold on a second.
Yeah. Okay, so first comment was full-time versus part-time. You know, we have a, we have a issue in here on, uh, a minimum amount of TOT tax that's going to be required.
Uh, yeah, we, we haven't set in the ordinance now, it's $500. Um, so that'll mean we have a minimum amount, amount of stays, you know, so it's actually being used, was the, uh, was the idea behind it from the, from the committee, is my understanding.
So then, um, we're, so that's going to penalize the people that are just doing it part-time, pretty much, or just going to be doing it just for the summer, um, more so, or?
Just for the summer, that you would, you would hit that number?
Okay. And then, uh, the other big thing was notification telephones for, you know, telephone number for complaints, so that's going to be listed on the property?
So when we, when we roll out the new ordinance, um, internally, we've talked about initiating the host compliance as a suite of, um, options and one of them is a hotline that you can call. Um, we also have our service request, um, link on the front of our website that you can file complaints there, um, uh, you know, related to vacation rentals or anything else, potholes, whatever. Um, and they get routed, uh, you know, based on category to the different departments. Um, you know, that's, um, normally what our code enforcement officer tracks, uh, is open and is open complaints in. Um, we also have, uh, a phone number on our website for code enforcements, um, literally if you type it into the search window, it comes up. Um, so we get calls on them. Uh, in fact, uh, our code enforcement officer today was sending off, um, a citation for an illegal vacation rental that hadn't ceased, um, operated. So we follow up on things regularly.
And along with that, we have, um, you know, in coordination with that, too, how do we tell the difference between an illegal, you know, somebody leasing or renting these out illegally as, you know, rather than having them legally go through the permits? What's the, what's going to be the, um, the routine or the, for dealing with that, uh, you know, as a complaint?
Um, we, we've, uh, we work with, uh, um, host compliance, um, we've hired them to, uh, monitor our vacation rentals. Uh, a lot of the cities in, in the county use them, they're, they're one of the leading companies that, uh, do vacation rental monitoring for us and they search all of the Airbnb, VRBO, major, you know, rental sites, uh, to see, look for listings. Um, and they have a process where we can identify them and, and send letters from them or send them ourselves. Um, and, uh, we've probably hit about 40 to 50 of them, um, illegal ones right now. We're in various stages of enforcement on, I think, about 30 to 35 currently. Like I said, uh, you know, a couple minutes ago, uh, we were actually to a point where on one of them that we're issuing a citation because they haven't stopped. Um, and then that ratchets up lines over time, um, and, you know, if we don't get compliance, then certainly we could, we could choose to take them to court if we wanted to. Um, so that's kind of the process that we use now, we'll continue to use that and like I said, I think we're probably, in the not-too-distant future, going to roll out the hotline, um, you know, through, uh, host compliance. Um, so it kind of starts the process for us and, because we only have code enforcement here three days a week, um, you know, uh, it's, we're, we're limited to when we can respond and, um, other than that, it's, you know, it goes, complaints, you know, if it's a noise issue or, or nuisance issue, you know, on times when code enforcement's not here or in the evenings, it has to go to PD, so, um, having another opportunity for that is, would be a good one. Um, and then also the ordinance requires us to add, that's, that, um, that the registered vacation rentals, um, have signage posted for a 24-hour contact number, um, so the neighborhood will be able to see that, have that as well, so it'll be multiple opportunities. Now, our current ordinance requires the signs, um, it's one of the first things we look for when we see a complaint, but we go out there.
Okay, Susan, you had something you'd wish to?
Just wanted to add a couple things. Um, one of the things that the committee talked about was having the signage, um, at the front of the property, probably at the street level, so it's easier to read. I think that's something Maggie brought up and I think that not only, um, just helps with identification for those coming to visit, but certainly helps the neighbors know who is actually a licensed vacation rental. And, and we also spent a lot of time And and we also spent a lot of time talking about the record-keeping, the recording of complaints, so that you actually knew that whatever property had been called about for noise, for trash, for parking, for whatever issues, and a way to collect that so that you could see that, you know, a particular property was really a nuisance more than some other property might be. And I don't know that we completely fleshed that out. Host compliance may be helpful with that, but we did talk about some way at the city offices of tracking how many complaints and coming up with some number, if you had X number of more serious complaints within a certain period of time, you would lose your license. And I think we'll be talking more about that later, the penalties, which we may need to make a little bit stricter.
Okay, and then Scott, we had several people ask about doing this as a, on a database program rather than on a motion or anecdotal evidence. And then we also had essentially asking the question, is this, is this a taking of their license, if their license is revoked, or because of the distancing, if they're not grandfathered in and we go with the distancing, is this, is this legal? Is this a taking of their of their rights or their livelihood?
No, I mean, you can still rent your house out on a longer-term basis. Taking really, you know, revolves around the removal of all economic use of a piece of property, so this isn't really down that, it doesn't really rise to that level. And I believe you, we had one of our assistant C attorneys on at the last meeting, I think you asked that same question, I think she confirmed that, so.
Okay. Yeah, for information, and then Betty Wainholdt submitted a written report. Have we addressed those issues on on that? I can't bring her up her email right now, or?
I don't have it open in front of me, give me one second, let me look.
I had it open, there was like 12 things, so I'm wondering if we want to do all that, all 12 of them right now?
No, I think we just, you know, hit the highlights.
I think we did get a T-bid recommendations, that was something she wanted. Apartments, and that was something T-bid brought up as well. I would like, I think, I'd like us to discuss this later, review both the mixed-use and the apartments, and how, what we might think about with capping those, especially in terms of the potential for the mixed-use areas to be the more low-income, you know, rentals we were talking about, being developed in the commercial areas.
I would agree with that as well, Susan.
Yeah, she talked about inspections, who's going to be doing the inspection, and I think we had answered that last meeting, both the fire marshal and a city inspector would inspect each property.
That's correct.
The inspection is at the time of permitting, and then once every four years, and upon complaint, the way I read it, correct?
Basically, that's basically it.
Let's see, are current legal non-conforming units counted within the cap? Well, that's kind of what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Aren't they all legal non-conforming at this point?
Um, no, some actually have the have a buffer around them, quite a good buffer. There are a few.
Oh, I see.
They're all conforming now. The woman adopted the new ordinance yet.
Right. Yeah, and I think people need to understand, really, the conformance has to do with if and when we adopt buffer zones, that will create nonconformance, but it's not that people won't be conforming because they're running a property that's not safe or, you know, is allowed to operate outside the normal health and safety rules.
Yeah, man, that's what, that's one of the good things that comes out of the draft ordinance is, you know, we has us doing inspections. Now, we would have been doing inspections anyway because state law has changed and requires us to do inspections on the fire side of things for these types of units, so fire would have been doing them. But they don't look for the same things that say like our building inspector and or code enforcement officer might be looking for, so it's kind of a two-pronged approach we're taking to it, I guess, or will be taking to it.
Okay, then I think the, what several other people mentioned was either the time was too long or the time was too short on the three-year time period, if we go with a with a lottery system at the end of a set time period, so I think we'll need to discuss that also. Was there anything that, Scott, that seemed to come up that I might have missed that we need to give information on or address?
Jamie Irons sent about the definition of guesthouse, we definitely need to discuss that.
Right. Well, that is, you know, that's tied up into the, with the junior ADU also, so there's, there's.
Yeah, yeah, well, whenever we get there, yeah, we have, there's something to discuss, for sure.
Right, okay. Okay, then let's go ahead and close, you know, close the discussion on public comment then. And I think we were, is everybody okay, everybody set to go, or do people want to take a couple-minute break before we go through the text? How you guys, how you guys feeling?
I say Lindsey Allen.
Okay.
That's just me.
Well, we're following your lead, Susan. So basically, we're at 17.41.040, short-term vacation rentals, some limitations. We're working our way through that, as far as I understand. Joseph?
Yeah, I I wanted to return to 1741030, where they talk about the the short-term vacation rental only applying to residential residentially zone. I want, I'd like to return to that notion of the commercial and the multi-use, if this is the time for that.
Okay, we might as well bring that up at this point then, because we also have the question of, do we want to apply this to apartments, or do we want to exempt apartments like we do ADU?
Yeah.
So, should I go on, or should?
So go ahead, you got, you got the field.
So I'll address both, both with respect to commercial and multi-use as being unregulated by cap or density. One, you know, I think we might fall victim right now to underestimating the demand for vacation rentals in these areas, and sometime in the not-too-distant future, we might be placed in the same situation that we are now with respect to residential. But but more importantly, this commission has often looked to the, you know, the possibility of building more in multi-use and commercial as market-based affordable housing. And I have a fact, I have a feeling that this is going to really impact affordable housing in multi-use and commercial, and I don't want that to happen. So I I'm reversing what I think I I said last time, thinking that we should have some, albeit minimal, capacity limitation and density limitation in the commercial and the multi, in the multi-use zoning. And also, I also, this isn't quite related, but I noticed that the the restriction as to the number of vacation rentals on apartments was only in residential zones. I see no reason to not have any limitations on the vacation rentals that you can have in apartment buildings, should those apartment buildings fall into commercial areas, as I do, as I know they do in some parts of the city, so that's my thought on that.
Okay. Anybody else wish?
So I want to, I want to make a little clarification there, in the multi-use areas, the primary zoning classification in those areas is commercial. So what you're looking at in these locations, these are going to be transitional areas oftentimes between full commercial and residential zones. So you should probably keep that in mind when you're thinking about what's going to be located in those areas. And then, you know, I think from the commercial standpoint, short-term rentals, you know, a lot of folks will argue that they're, you know, quasi-commercial anyway. And in those areas, you often have houses that are being, you know, that go back and forth between uses, right? There might be a dentist office for a while, and then there are residents for a while, and then they're a law office or something, so that's not uncommon to have, you know, houses that are used for other things in those transitional-type areas.
Well, what I was thinking specifically was our discussions where we had talked, there'd been suggestions that sometime in the future to perhaps raise the height, the maximum height, to afford a third story on some of these commercial buildings, and we were hoping, or at least I was hoping, that that would be a source of market-based affordable housing, but I I fear that should we do that without the limitations, then that residential on the third floor would quickly become vacation rentals and not affordable housing.
Also, separate process for that, that would, that would be something, the use along with the development would come before the planning commission for review, so they would have to tell us what they're doing, if they're going to say they're residential units, then they're residential units. If they wanted to change them and say, oh, now we want to have them be vacation rentals, that would have to come back to the planning commission, so. The discretionary process is built into that, that process, moving forward anyway, if we were to go to three stories, if that happens, so.
So Scott, just for clarification, where does an R3 or an R4 condo project fit in all of this? Would this fit in as commercial, or?
Well, underneath the currents, well, I mean, R4 can be, it's a mix of things. R4 is, it's kind of high-density residential, and it's hotel, motel, you know, mixed-use professional office, you know, it's got a long classification of things you can do on them, so that one is more along the mixed-use lines of things. It becomes much more clear in the new zoning code with that, we call things what they are as opposed to these sort of antiquated terms that are that are used in the current code. I would also note that we, as the code's written now, unless there's changes made to it, the distance requirements between vacation rentals applies to all areas of town. The only thing that's been said so far is, hey, don't use, don't count commercial in the cap, and don't count home shares in the cap. All of those things are still subject to whatever ends up coming out of this process, at least as it stands right now, for buffers or distances between units, those types of things. So be aware of that, because if that's what you want, good, if that's not what you want, then you should probably speak to that now.
That's what I was going to ask, is that that seems appropriate, I mean, if you, so I used to live on the corner of Monterey and Pacific, and that's a, you know, right in the, right off of Main Street, I'm sorry, right up from Moro Bay Boulevard, it is kind of one of those areas where it's kind of residential, it's kind of, it's kind of commercial. And if you know, if the apartment building I used to live in, you know, is 10 units, I would hate to see 10 vacation rentals there, so I mean, you know, excluding apartments specifically doesn't seem appropriate, but also having no limitations on apartments in a commercial zone doesn't seem appropriate either, so I think there's, there's a mix, there's a fine line there, I'm sorry, a fine distinction that we should say, yeah, the buffers zone applies, but you can do it in apartments, you know, if you have 10 apartments, you can do one of them, I mean, that that seems reasonable.
That is in the ordinance.
Yep.
That's written in, it's item C.
Right, what I was going to say is, what, the devil's in the details, so, and I think specifically here, the devil's going to be in the definitions, so defining guesthouse, defining apartment, defining all these things. So apartment is defined one way in the building code and then defined a different way in the residential code, so they don't even, our codes don't even jive up, so, you know, if you have six units on a parcel, you know, a legal non-conforming parcel, are those six units apartments, or are they detached single-family dwellings? I mean, I don't know. So anyway, doesn't matter.
Oh, well, I'm, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but I'm reading short-term vacation rentals in residential zones, so be subject to the density limitations. So I I take the fact that they set it in residential zones means that the density provision would not apply in commercial or mixed-use. Am I, am I wrong about that?
What section are you looking at?
I'm looking at 10-41-3030.
030.
So it's in the general?
Yeah. C.
B?
C.
C.
Charlie.
That was, that was my impression on that, too, Scott, so.
Okay, yeah, it does.
It doesn't mention mixed-use or commercial zones being subject to the density requirements.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I I thought that's what it said.
Well, is that what we wanted to say?
I didn't.
I I can agree with that, too, but on on E, which is on page six, that, on the original draft, 1741030E, it says, "Short-term vacation rentals shall not be operated from dwellings that are designated as affordable housing units." So if we have someone who's come forward with a plan that says, I want these benefits based on them being affordable housing units, that precludes them from being vacation rentals.
Right, but that still does, that still allows them to be not subject to the density limitations in commercial or mixed-use zones.
I'm in favor of the density limitations.
Yeah, throughout.
But think about that little cluster of cottages on Pacific, right above Target Gallery, I think, and I think they're all vacation rentals, and it's kind of commercial, and, I mean, is that, do we want to say only one of those could be a vacation rental?
Good point.
That's a very good point.
I I'm in agreement with, you know, especially when I think about, say, we do put upstairs apartments in the downtown, you know, and there's four of them in a little cluster, maybe only one of them gets to be a vacation rental, but.
Well, I mean, realistically, I think that what probably is most appropriate there from a planning perspective would be for them to apply for a zone change and be reclassified as hotel motel.
Which may be in that zone anyhow.
Yeah, maybe a use change rather than a zone change.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess we need to get a clarification here, so I, so I, I think, you know, Commissioner Stewart hit the, you know, the nail on the head there a little bit. You you could have a project that would come forward before you went to commercial zone and could be a vacation rental project. I mean, when I was in, before I came to Moro Bay, I was in Pismo, we, that was a regular occurrence in the downtown, they had projects that would come forward and would be vacation rental projects, meaning they they could have called them and like, put air quotes around it, this is our hotel motel project, and it's, you know, four units, but instead of doing that, they just said, no, it's going to be a vacation rental project, that's the way they permitted it when they went through planning commission. And so they were functioned as vacation rentals in the downtown, which is a perfectly acceptable location for them. So if they didn't do that, they'd be coming forward and saying, oh, this is going to be our boutique hotel, which is also allowed in the zone. I had six, six of one, half of those in the other, but I mean, that's certainly something that you could see come forward in that location, and it would be fine for a commercial area in town, because you can also have hotels and motels there.
Well, Scott, we actually have, you know, that hotel down there on Front Street, next to Frankie and Lola's, that that is, got a sign out front that says it's a, you know, it's a vacation rental, when it's actually, you know, was permitted as a five-unit hotel. So, you know, we're, how can, how can we not get in this trouble?
Well, I I think, I mean, I think unless you have a lot of heartburn with it, I think you, I think we just kind of go with the way that it is here, and it allows for, you know, short-term rentals in the commercial zone and/or the mixed-use zones that are primarily commercial. You know, now, if you want to have the secondary conversation, we move from this and we go, okay, what do you want to do with apartment buildings? Do you want, do you want them in apartment buildings? We have, there's some pretty good, you know, requirements in here, you don't, you can't have a whole bunch of them, like, you know, the the situation that Commissioner Brown, you know, suggested would allow for one or two based on the ordinance, I forget which, but it's one per eight, I think, in the ordinance, so you could have one. If you don't want to have any in 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 those types of situations, then the ordinance can be revised, similar to how the T-Bid Board, you know, is suggesting, and we don't allow them there. Fair point.
Okay, Scott, let me, I'm, I'm sorry, Joseph, but let's, let me connect on the difference between apartment buildings and condos. If we're, you know, if if there's a condo condo unit, it's basically, you know, attached, you know, multi.
Pretty simple distinction, condos are individually owned, and apartment buildings are owned by one owner, hall units.
Right, unless somebody owns the whole, the the whole unit and condo, and developed them as condos, but rents them out long-term.
Right, the condos have the parcel lines typically within the paint, it's, it's a whole, yeah, it's a whole issue.
Right, but if we have one owner on the whole parcel, on the whole tract, then essentially they could rent them all out as vacation rentals.
Well, they'd be subject to the density limitations, wouldn't they?
Well, right now, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be, wouldn't fit under the density limitation because it'd be in a mixed-use or a multi-use.
I see.
So, so.
There's the, so there's mixed-use districts and there's multifamily housing, those are, those are distinct in the ordinance. The multifamily housing is the, is the, is the thing related to the apartments, but it could be other multifamily housing, like, say, aerospace condos or something like that, it could be that as well. airspace condos or something like that. It could be that as well. So that limitation, you know, would apply in those circumstances. And that gets something to the point you're making as, as far as the density goes. It's just a little bit different of a requirement there.
Okay, Joseph, you're muted.
Sorry about that. My concern is rooted in a very practical consideration, and I don't know how likely it is, but I did not want to find out that some four-unit apartment building situated just off the downtown in a commercial area, where after we pass this ordinance without a density or capacity limitation, the occupants of those four units get eviction notices after being told that their owner is going to turn their apartment building into, you know, four vacation units, short-term vacation rental units. I didn't.
We could see, Joseph, we could see that specifically with the project that we approved for the Stollmeyer's, you know, on Main Street.
Yeah, yes.
What if we included, potentially raised the cap a little, included those in commercial or mixed-use properties, but what we didn't apply in the commercial and mixed-use zones was the, the distance, the density restriction. So since we have a waiting list already for vacation rentals, and we do have, I think I had counted about 90 basically unperforming or underperforming permitted rentals already, and there weren't that many, I think there were 13 in the commercial zones that have permits. So I think we discussed 150 if we raised it to 175 or 200, but that includes commercial as well. So that takes care of the ones that already have their permits in those zones. And we, because, I mean, I think about, also on Main Street where Frankie has all those, the little old homes, there's three of them on one lot, and then he has a duplex off Monterey as well. Those are vacation rentals. Seems like appropriate use for that part of the downtown. So you wouldn't necessarily want to put those density restrictions on that part of town.
So Susan, Scott, what if we, we've got visitor-serving zoning? Would that be the appropriate designation to have basically free run-in and mixed-use and commercial to be restricted?
So, I, I guess, let me back up here a little bit. I'm not, so, the hotel motel use is allowed in commercial and these transition areas. Now, our current code is a little messy with it because of the way that they're, they're defined, but they're, you know, they're, again, those mixed-use areas are kind of a transition area in most instances in the code, and the new code resolves it. It's, it's much clearer in the new code because we, we call it transitional mixed use. That's, that's a name of a thing in our new code. So it tells you what you're doing. You're going from commercial to residential and there's a transition area and you can do multiple things there. Our current code has it all built into, has it built into its current zoning, and so depending on what it is, a lot of times we have like, you know, we have slashes that go, you know, visitor-serving, commercial plan developments, specific plan, whatever these other things are. R4 sometimes is a category that's added on to it. So that's how they did it in our current code, and so it allows for just a whole bunch of things because it has all of those zoning classifications built into it. It's certainly a lot messier. But I, I think if you can come down on the, on the, on the side of what do you want to do with multifamily housing? Do you want it to have, is the current code, is the, is the draft code fine for that? Because then if it is, it doesn't, none of this matters. We can just apply it uniformly to the different zoning classifications and it works just fine. If you don't want to have any in those areas for multifamily housing, or you don't want to have them specifically for apartment buildings, you should say that. I think that's how we address this issue because in commercial zones, this isn't allowed, hotel vehicles aren't allowed use or a conditionally permitted use, one of the two, depending on where you're at. And it would all be predicated on, you know, what the project is when it comes before you, kind of like the Front Street project that Chair Lou was talking about. It was a nice project. They, they proved it as a hotel motel use, but it didn't make sense for them to operate it like that. And so they operated like a vacation rental, which makes, I think, far more sense for what those things are.
Captain, ask the point of clarification here. So did you say that apartments are limited to one in eight? Did I hear that? So no matter what, it's one in eight tops on a parcel?
Yep.
Well, that's, that, that actually alleviates my concern, so.
Okay. We don't have much of a big apartment complexes in town, so.
Nah, there's a handful over in that Monterey, you know.
Yeah, they're not, they're not, I mean, but they're not, I mean, I, I don't know that we have any that are over 30 units.
No, that's about 30, yeah. Pretty, pretty big.
Michael, were you trying to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say that it's partially the, the kind of markets we're looking at. I, I think the, the, the thing that I've taken advantage of as a single traveler, when I've been on some of my trips in Europe, is, is the apartment that's hosted. And, and so the, again, the hosted one doesn't bother me so much, but I'd hate to, I, I completely agree with, with Joseph. I don't want to see our, our multifamily turn into hotels. I think that's a, that's a tragedy. And I, I don't, I, I'm really interested in the discussion about the, the downtown. I, I don't see anybody rushing to build downtown anticipating these, these new requirements yet, new, new opportunities. But I would be interested if, if there's any interest in, in, in kind of firewalling the different zones as to what the caps would be. So instead of letting them flow across, capping them in, in individual areas, like the residential, single-family residential cap would be one thing, the downtown cap, something like that, that would, that would allow for some maybe adjustments piecemeal fashion, rather than letting some other economic opportunity come where we, where we have a, a situation like we have now, where things got out of hand before there was a, you know, a handle put on the thing.
Okay. I think what we're trying to achieve here is, we're trying to achieve, we're trying to support as much market-based low, or to low-cost housing as we can, as we can keep, but not impeding the ability of people in the commercial zones and the hotel, the hotel areas to be able to market these as vacation rentals or stuff. So, you know, the question is, does this, the way this is worded, does that do that, Scott? Or is there a better way to go about it?
We want to make the apartment thing explicit to all zones. So we probably need some work on that there to make sure that it's explicit, which is not a problem.
Okay. So do we have agreement that there should be, there should be limitations on the apartment zone, probably the one in eight at a maximum, or do we want to eliminate all, all vacation rentals in apartments?
Since I.
Joseph, what?
No, I'm, I'm satisfied with what the limitations with respect to apartments reads now, but with the proviso that it will apply to all zones. And I very much agree with Michael's notion that we might have a, a separate capacity for the commercial zone. You know, I think, I think ordinances get better the further they depart from, you know, sort of a one-size-fits-all approach. And, and again, we don't really know what the demand, if any, for vacation rentals is going to be in the future years in the commercial area. And it'd be nice to sort of be able to monitor separately without it impacting or being impacted by what we've, what we do for the residential.
I'm okay with it, one in eight.
Okay, Susan?
We apparently currently have five vacation rentals in apartments. I talked with Joan Solu and asked her. And again, T-Bid was recommending 100% restriction. I, I think I would be okay with the one in eight. It would be especially nice if that helped the owner of the apartment perhaps provide lower-cost housing for somebody in that complex, but that would probably be something that would come down the road as we're permitting new projects. And, you know, the one thing I get back to is eventually it'll be in the hands of the council and they can see both recommendations and then make a decision, you know. Pass that buck.
Okay, Michael, where do you, where do you land on this?
I'd, I'd rather make it clean and say no with the apartments. I think that probably is our best low-cost stuff that we have now. I'm, I'm very concerned about that.
Okay. I, then, I will, I'll side with Michael on this. I would, I would like to see it 100% restricted or eliminated, basically just because once when we were, you know, when I was traveling in, you know, in Europe, at one, back in the day, the big problem was, and we did a, we did a vacation rental, and we were in the middle of an apartment building in the middle of the, of the city. And the, everything I read about what was going on was that people were buying the apartments, paying over the price on them, and then kicking out the residents or, you know, and then turning them all into vacation rentals because they could. I don't know if we have that much of a draw on this, but I would, I would like to see, you know.
Would that apply to homestays, Jerry? Like somebody who's living in the apartment, maybe has a second room and wants to rent it out while they're there?
I think the homestays, no, I wouldn't. I would allow them to do that. I think that's a whole different.
Yeah, okay.
A whole different business model, you know, rather than buying, buying an apartment building or buying an apartment, you know, I don't know if you can buy apartments, they're just rentals. So.
I would think most contracts in an apartment would probably not allow you to sublet like that.
Right, right. So I guess we have like a 3-2 on this and then we can go to the city council on, on that recommendation. Did I read that right?
Does it make it any, I mean, so, I mean, I didn't want to say this. Go ahead. So, you know, one option there is that you, you prohibit them, with I guess the exception of homestays, potentially need to talk about that, in the residential zones, and you could do the density, the one in eight in the other zones if you want.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
So you, so in the residential zones, you could prohibit them, maybe with the exception of the homestay, you'd have that discussion. And then in the other zones, the mixed-use and commercial zones where we have these, and these, these would be in many of those, and several of those zones would be non-conforming if they were apartment buildings, you could allow the one in eight if you wanted.
So that's the R1, 2, and 3. We're calling that the residential zone. R4 would be called commercial.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good solution. I can go, I'll go along with that recommendation.
I can live with that.
So do I. Okay. You're in A, Michael.
I'll be the minority on that one.
Susan, I think you went along with that?
Sure.
Okay, so we got about 4-1 on that. So that, so we can, we can send that as a recommendation with a 4-1.
Okay, can we get a, can I get, can we get some consensus on whether homeshares in the residential zones are, in apartments are okay?
Before we do that, before we do that, can we define guest houses? I think this is probably a good point.
We have a definition in the code, in the zoning code.
Right, but amending that definition.
But to amend that definition, in the definition, the way I reread it or what, you know, on that email was that it cannot be rented out separately. It had to be, you know, there are no financial enumeration for the, the guest house.
Right, so basically the detached guest house cannot be a hosted vacation rental. That's what, that's, that's what I understood. I mean, I, I, was Jamie correct in his analysis, Scott?
I believe that's what it says.
So I mean, the point is that.
A guest house is different than an ADU. You know, a guest house restricts the cooking facilities where an ADU doesn't. And a guest house can be a section of the house without, you know, where an ADU has to have its own separate entrance.
Kind of. So junior ADUs don't need a separate entrance, but it's about communicability and it's about detachment from the existing single-family. And I think the point of this was whether or not a bedroom is attached or detached to the primary single-family residence. Currently, our, our proposal would be to say a detached bedroom cannot be a hosted VR where an attached bedroom can. And I think clearing that up would be, would be something we should do.
Is that clear to everybody what Commissioner Brown was saying?
Yes.
Because it is a little bit, a little bit odd. You can have a detached bedroom and you can't use it as a hosted, but if you have an attached bedroom, you're good.
Yeah, right, right.
So I mean, I, I don't know if Jamie's wording was perfect, but I mean, it got the point across on, on, on what he was saying. So I mean, can we make, can we agree on that, that change? And then I'm, I'm okay with whatever you guys want to do with guest houses.
So the question is, are you okay with allowing guest houses as homeshare? SDRs? Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that because it can't be a home somebody could live in without a kitchen.
Yeah.
I don't know how many there are in our town, just a bedroom and a bathroom, separate from another.
We have a few of them, some of, yeah, we have a few of them. Some of them are attached, some of them are detached.
Well, and I got a feeling that, I mean, as we, through attrition, lose some of these non-hosted vacation rentals, you know, some folks are going to have to, by necessity, maybe change to a hosted. And this may be an alternative for them, maybe helps them in, you know, transitions.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. We're saying, we're saying that's okay if it's hosted.
Yes.
Yes, if the owner lives on the property.
Yeah, that, that's, that's what I would say. I, it'd be hard for me to come up with a distinction between, you know, a separate bedroom in the backyard as opposed to the bedroom being attached if the owner's living on the property in either case. So I, I think they should be able to, to, to do that.
It gets a little more tricky and there's, I think we'll probably talk about it in a little bit, but the junior ADUs versus ADUs. So that, that gets a little tricky, but I, I think we talk about it in a different section.
Yes, as long as we keep the distinction between a guest house and an ADU distinct, I think we're okay.
Okay. Okay, are we good with that? Can we move on to 17.41.040, the short-term vacation rentals and density limitations? So item A was, was about the maximum, the maximum number. I think we had dropped it, what did we drop it to, 150 last? Or is everybody still good with that?
Well, I mean, the fact that T-Bid's at 175 and we're at 150 kind of, kind of concerns me. I was always for 175. I thought that was a better number. I'll reintroduce that. But, you know, when this goes to council, we want to give them as, I would hope, as linear a decision to make as possible, you know. I would like to be in, in concurrence with T-Bid to the extent possible.
And, and I think I was the biggest advocate for, or at least I started it off last meeting, and I've thought about it since then. And for me, the real issue is the density in areas where they're more concentrated. And I think 150, 175, 200, any of those is, is a reasonable number to settle on. And I, I think as Michael was saying at the last meeting, the real, the real effect and the real focus should be the density. So I, I'm fine with, I, I would be fine with, with 175 if we agree on that.
Okay, Susan?
I'd be fine with the 175, but I would also even consider something like 200, but include the commercial and mixed-use zones. So the, the total number in the city would include those commercial ones, but I could also just go with the 175 for the non-commercial zones.
Okay, Michael?
Well, I'll, I'll play my tape from last meeting. I'm more concerned about distance. And, and if we reduce the distance, I'm not in favor of lower, of raising the cap in any way, shape, or form. I think the, the number of these things is the, is the fundamental problem and, and, and the distance. And I, I, I would say if, if we want to raise it because of these other locations, I would, I would make a separate cap in some of the other areas. But the residential at 150, I think, is very generous, considering many of other towns have eliminated these from residential districts altogether. And I'm, I'm very sorry about the, the data-driven people. And I'm, I'm very sorry about the, the data-driven people. But the, the fact is, the, the, what is a quality of residence is not something that's, that's data-driven. It's something that's qualitative and lived. And, and just because there's not a complaint doesn't mean that people are happy. And just because uh a, a place has upkeep and things like that doesn't mean it's contributing to the quality of a neighborhood. And uh, you know, I'll, I'll have more things to say later on, but I, I would keep the cap at a hundred and fifty. And add it in the commercial mixed use area if we want to add more.
Okay. I'm more concerned about the density also. So I think the cap is going to be a self-regulating number. Basically, because where these are gonna be economically viable is gonna be the areas where they're gonna be wanting to be most dense, which is, you know, the ocean views and then as close to the ocean and the beaches as possible. Those are the ones that are gonna keep getting rented. Those are the ones that are gonna be um, gonna be more economically viable. So I think the overall cap is probably, you know, not a big, not as big a deal as, as keeping the separation of the densities. So, so I would go, you know, I'm, I'm still good with the two fifty number because I don't think we'll essentially will ever, will actually reach it. So um, I can, anything, you know, I'm good, I'm good with that then. My, my call will be two fifty, so. Essentially, we've got one, one, one seventy-five to, to two fifty on this. And Scott? So would me, would me as the only one up to the two fifty mark?
With, with one voice for a hundred and.
Yeah, one, one voice for none. No.
If I was voting my conscience, it would be none. But I'm voting, I understand the community's very strong voice that's come through all the communication of the residents.
Right.
Except for a handful of resident owners of the VRs. It's very strong opposition and it's clear in the, in the survey that was taken as well as the correspondence.
Yeah, and I, I would add, I mean, I, to, to just follow on that. I think there's an expectation among the majority of the citizens of Morro Bay that we do something to significantly reduce the capacity. Again, I'm not sure how much we have to reduce it, but I think it should be something less than two fifty.
Okay. Are you good with, do you have marching orders on that, Scott?
So I'm moving the one seventy-five forward.
Yes, okay. Again, okay. Okay, so then uh, section, you know, paragraph B, does anybody have a problem with that? And then we're C and then.
When do we get to the density and the?
I think D is the density, isn't it? Okay. Okay, so let's get down to the density. This is the, this is where I think it's gonna be most critical. Because, you know, having one of these, you know, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred feet away is one thing, having a, being surrounded on three sides of with, with these, I think is another. So.
Well, i- i- if I can jump in here, uh, sir, using Scott's uh new data, you know, we're talking about three and then we're talking about a hundred and fifty, then we're talking about a hundred and seventy-five. It, it seems like the way these neighborhoods are configured, there's no one-size-fits-all that is gonna be applied, is gonna be great for any neighborhood.
We also have a huge differential between the effect of that, whether on, whether we're on the long side of the lot or the short side of the lot. You know, if we have, you know, as was shown, if we have a three lot, a three lot separation and you're on the long side of the lot, you can be taking up three, three of the blocks where, which would actually be maybe six hundred feet, could be, you know, uh, six hundred feet if they're a hundred-foot lots all the way, all the way across, so.
Right, but the example, the example we had on Beachcomber and the example we had on Marina, I mean, we had drastically different uh, uh, outcomes as far as lot, lot uh, you know, being affected lots-wise than we did, you know, uh, on the, I forgot the one that had the, the single lot with streets.
San Jacinto.
San Jacinto. So I mean, it just seems like all three of those examples were so drastically different that any, any, anything we decide is gonna be detrimental to one of those examples.
It's why I chose those.
Yeah.
Good job.
I, I mean, because you need to see what, what they mean because it's not a one-size-fits-all. I just showed you the beach tract, that means one thing. If I showed you one of the other, you know, areas down, it means something else, so.
Right, so I mean, which makes me my bigger point, I guess, when I'll spit it out. Maybe we should, maybe we ought to look at these neighborhoods specific.
That's gonna be really tough to.
It'll be hard.
Yeah.
It would be, it'll be a lot of work, but I mean, Beachcomber is different than Marina, which is different than San Jacinto.
Yeah, it seems like mostly the difference was in which way the lots were running.
I agree.
So if, if you have three lots and you've got street-to-street lots, you're three whole blocks before you can have another one. Whereas if you have three lots and you're on the short side of a thirty-foot, with a thirty-foot frontage, you're only a hundred foot away from the next one.
What if we set something like three lots or a hundred and seventy-five linear feet, whichever is larger?
To me, the, the linear foot one is completely spurious because if you look at the examples that are there where it shows where the vacation rentals are, there's people who are gonna have one across the street and then behind them, either right behind them or on a diagonal. And that kind of saturation, I think, is really wrong. We're in a place where sound travels, where noises are, are really easily overheard, you know, from fifty, a hundred feet away without any problem at all. So the ones that showed the linear distance to me were, were, were all dead in the water because they, they still allow too much of a density to the exposed residents. And I, I, I think the radius ones are the way we have to go. And, and I would still look at the two fifty, but um, uh, I, 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 the beach tract is different. The, the, the Beachcomber residents that spoke here, I feel very bad about them, but we also have the residents that have spoken and said, I live in that nest of vacation rentals and I don't have a neighborhood. And I completely agree with that.
Yeah.
We can't abandon residential neighborhoods because there's a business model that's incredibly successful. You know, we should have a cannabis, we should have a cannabis outlet on every corner then because the business model would be really successful. But we don't because the quality of life would, would be impacted. We know from the residents, the quality of life is impacted by these. And, and I think we're making a huge mistake by trying to amend the larger plan to accommodate a number of owners who went into a business venture within a residential district.
You know, I, I do believe that that's the, the crux of the problem is that this is a commercial enterprise placed in a residential area which traditionally doesn't allow commercial enterprises and too many commercial enterprises have opted to take advantage of them. But, but I will say, you know, Michael, you were, the, the, the problem, not the problem, but clearly the density is written from the perspective of the vacation rental spots, not from the perspective of the non-vacation rental owners. And it, and if you do kind of a theoretical, which is what I did. I, I did kind of, I, I had my own little lottery that I conducted three times and, and I sort of plotted where all the lottery uh winners went, okay? And it is possible if you're a, a non, a, a non-vacation short-term rental owner, a non, just a, just a homeowner, using the three lot density, it is possible still to have theoretically, to have somebody across the street and somebody off your back lot. But in my little three experiments, it only happened once. So it, it seemed to me that everything sort of had to line up perfectly or imperfectly, if you will, for that to happen. So, you know, I, I don't know what to make of that.
Okay, Joseph and Michael, one of the things that I liked about having the way it is now is we have the adjacent, the abutting and the diagonal lots are restricted. So they, so you wouldn't have something directly behind you. You know, you wouldn't have two of them directly apart as far as just having a, just having the linear dimension or the lot dimension just on a linear basis. You know, having that the way it is now is better than just having a basic, you know, just along a street frontage because then you could have something across the street or something. Whereas the way it's written now, you, that wouldn't happen. Where.
We, we.
Where I have a problem with is, is the differential on the lot sizes between the thirty-foot lot frontage and the hundred-foot lot frontage. So that's where I just have a problem. And then I don't see how we can, how we can make that right. So, so Jesse, did you have an idea?
Well, I was just saying, Susan was, was, had brought up a good point that um, you know, we do the, the whichever is greater, you know, three lots or a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
We could do three lots and a hundred and fifty feet, you know, so I mean, you know, it has to be three lots and it has to be within a hundred foot. So instead of or, have an and.
Yeah, that would be, that would be my suggestion. But, but again, Jerry, I watch, I mean, you do understand, again, right now with the density, you cannot, you cannot have a vacation rental on a, on a piece of property and a vacation rental directly across the street and one behind it. But as I said, you could have a non-vacation rental and you could have one across the street and one, and a vacation rental directly behind that. So the, the notion that the, the three lots theoretically is going to eliminate, you know, private owner being sort of surrounded by vacation rentals isn't quite accurate. It's just very, very unlikely.
Well, but it also seems, I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I, I think if, if I remember right, when I was looking at it, you're still gonna end up with some of those short streets in, in the Beachcomber area there that are, that are gonna have three um vacation rentals on a, on a block segment by some of these, by some of these mechanisms.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I'd advocate having what Susan was suggesting, and/or a hundred and fifty linear feet as an alternative to the three lot measurement or maybe even more. I, I don't profess to know which number.
If we took the, if we took the lot as a rectangle and, and talked about which side, the short side or the long side, and talked about the short side three lots rather than the long side, you know, depending on how, how it faces, I'm, I'm sure there's some kind of a permutation we could get to where this makes sense. Talking about short side of the rectangle versus lots, long side of the rectangle.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it, this, it, it's the typical, you know, it's a problem we have in Morro Bay where we have, where we, it wasn't laid out on a basic grid. It was laid out from eighteen eighty-six, you know, by, by how many arms lengths to presently where we have, you know, new subdivisions or, you know, or fairly recent subdivisions up in Del Mar where they have ten thousand square foot lots. So, you know, if you're getting the Del Mar district up there, you, you know, three, three lots is a mile away almost or something. You know, that's being facetious, but, you know, you're, when you're on ten thousand foot lots, three lots is a long ways. So I, I, I've, I've played this both ways and I don't have a good answer for it. So I'm willing to be convinced.
But remember, you know, we have other policies in the document that talk about the behavior of vacation rentals. So even if you had the, you know, scenario, it's gonna be pretty infrequent as Commissioner Graffia suggested, based on the current, you know, methodology shown in the code. You know, it's gonna be pretty unlikely that you run into the situation where you would have one behind you or in front of you, but it could happen, certainly. But we have the guidance in the document that tells you how they're supposed to behave. And so to have a problem, you have to have a couple of things happen. One, you have to have that scenario take place in the neighborhood you're in. And then you have to have bad actors in one, in, in vacation rentals that aren't operated properly for it to be a problem. And if it is a problem and we, and we see an issue with it over time, this thing's not written in concrete. I mean, we can change it. And the length in the current code has us reviewing these things over time. Like we have a, we have a check back in period, planning commission's requested it in a year, so is the city council. And then we have a check back in three years, um, when we'll be getting, you know, we'll be timing out on ADUs and um, and the apartment units potentially. So um, I mean, there's, you have the ability to change things, I guess, is where I'm at. If, if, if it doesn't work well or we see problems with it over time.
Okay, can we come to some consensus on this?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is, is, you know, the, perhaps people's idea is that there's two or four people in some of these rentals. We have the people corresponding with us talking about how important it was for them to have eight people or one even said sixteen that I've got. And that, that's what I have to be next to. I have twelve, fourteen people next to me all the time. It's like a three or four unit apartment next to me. I don't live next to a residence. I live next to, you know, ten to fourteen people. And that's not what I bargained for. And, but that's what we're saying, is there's no, there's no intensity aspect of this except to accommodate distance. So if you have a short distance and you have some of these larger homes that are bringing in eight to twelve people within a short distance from each other, they're gonna have friends come over. And if it's complaint-driven, that's not the issue. It's, that's a, that's a kind of density that's not typically in the area. Sure, it's something for a holiday. I don't mind when my, my neighbors have friends come over and, and they're parking in the streets and things like that. But they're not, they're not inducing a, a density of eight to ten, twelve, fourteen people week after week after week. And that's what gnaws on people. It's not, it's not the fire pit necessarily, although I do think we ought to get rid of those too. But it's this kind of, it's just an intensity that was never anticipated.
Well, Jerry, Jerry, what, what, what about this as a suggestion? What, what if we, if we had the, the lottery after one year, but it was not to take effect until two or three years beyond? But once we have the lottery, we would be able to more clearly evaluate exactly what the, the new density was going to mean. And you, we might, you know, then have some amending to, to address what perhaps Michael was talking about or the unfortunate eventuality where, you know, there was.
Well, what we're talking about here, Joseph, that's, you know, I have a little problem with the workability on that. You know, it's not a bad idea, but I just don't see how it's gonna work because in the interim time after the lottery, you're not gonna have as many people. There's gonna be a lot of changes, you know, during that time period. Well, I think what Michael's referring to, and I, I, I fully, you know, I sympathize with him because we had a vacation rental next door to us for, for a short amount of time. And um, I, it's the operational aspects of the vacation rental. If that's a four, if that's a three-bedroom house, they shouldn't have, you know, the, you know, essentially they could have eight people there. That means, you know, four to eight cars. You know, so, you know, it may not be a problem if everybody's, you know, you know, coming in on soft slippers and in bed by nine, but that's not what happens in a vacation room, you know. So, you know, people haven't seen each other for a long time or they're just getting together and they're, you know, they're, they're partying and they, they leave the neighborhood and they're, they're back. So I, I understand. So if you have one of those next door to you, it's one thing. If you have two of them next door to you or if you're sandwiched in between them, that's another. You know, that's even, even worse, so.
I'm, I'm completely sympathetic to that. I'm, I'm surprised that the, 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 the recommending committee didn't address the notion of, 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 of limiting the calendar days in a year where you could have some of these houses rented out, particularly the larger houses because, again, no one wants to have ten guests, ten months of the year in the house next door to them.
I think the market probably does that on its own.
Yeah, well, no, I think some of these houses are so desirable vis-à-vis their view of the beach and locations that they rent out a, you know, I think they rent out.
Looking at the Givety collections, they do.
Yeah, more than two hundred days a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the best houses are gonna rent for a full week and they're gonna be rented week to week to week. And you're gonna have, you're gonna have a half a day for somebody to come in and clean and they're gonna be rented for a full seven-day weeks, you know. So, but we do need to, let's get back to the issue of separation and the density. And so we have, we have the existing, you know, what's. And so we have, we have the existing, you know, what's written in the code now, or the draft proposal as, as the three lot. We have, we have the, the instance of the bubbles, um, and then we also have the instance of where we have the three lots plus a minimum or a maximum of X amount of feet. Which, which direction do we wanna go here, guys?
Uh, I would, I would opt for the, the alternative, three lots and/or the hundred and fifty linear feet, just if nothing else to begin to address what has gotta be some of the unintended consequences of just having a three lot separation.
Okay.
And I also think it's important that we try, well, no, um, I, I, I think it's somewhat important to sort of try to stay within the guidelines of the committee so that we, I, I realize there wasn't a consensus on this, but nevertheless, it was, you know, something that seeming a plurality had agreed upon.
So whichever is.
Greater.
The greater.
Provides, yeah, provides greater separation, yeah.
Okay. Hundred and fifty feet. Michael, where do you, where do you stand on this here?
I, I think a hundred and fifty feet is, 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 you know, in smaller lot areas is, is way too close.
Is the hundred and fifty feet, um, just clarification, is the hundred and fifty feet, um, in both directions from the house, meaning it's three hundred feet?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
But you're talking linear there.
Measuring from where? From the center of the lot or measuring from the property line?
Edge of the property line.
Yeah. So, yeah, and we're also having the adjacent and the diagonal and the, the behind consideration too. So, so the lots right adjacent to this or diagonal would also be restricted or across from.
I, I think if you have a larger cap, you know, and you, you, you put the shorter distance in, you're gonna see a proliferation in some of our tighter districts of these. I mean, you're gonna get some kind of migration out of the denser places, maybe like Beachcomber, but this is gonna be something somebody's gonna take advantage of because it's an economic model that, that works and drives up costs. And, and I, I think that's, that's not good for our residential policy. And I don't, I don't think putting businesses that are especially, or very successful businesses that are not owner occupied in the residential things is, is a really positive idea.
Okay, so what's your recommendation, Michael?
Well, I have written down two fifty from last time that we discussed, and I, I wanna have the maximum that we can possibly get. I, I, we've already compromised on letting them in residential areas. We've compromised on, on letting them in apartment buildings. We've compromised on letting them in the commercial and the mixed use. Some of our, our neighboring communities don't have any of these in residential areas. And so I, I think two fifty is, is a good number.
Okay, so we're talking about three lots and two fifty. That's your vote. Susan, where, where do you stand on this?
Was Commissioner Lucas, were you saying two fifty linear distance or are you saying two fifty buffer?
Radial.
Oh, you're talking about two fifty radial then?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of any linear distance.
Five in the entire city.
It, it will be dramatic, that's for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, when we looked at the two hundred and fifty circle buffer zones, um, that wiped out a lot of the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, and it's hard. You know, I think that the committee really worked hard to hear each other and we had representation from so, all the different stakeholders, um, and people at that point realized they were not all going to be happy, um, but hopefully happier. Um, and man, we went over so many different formulas and charts and, um, one of the members particularly was great at making these diagrams and showing how these conflicts happened. Um, so, you know, I guess in some ways the two hundred and fifty foot circle gives you what, a hundred and twenty-five feet in either direction, any direction.
So that's a radius, isn't it, Scott?
It's a radius.
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty radius.
Around the outside of the lot.
Around the outside of the lot, so it's a lot plus two hundred and fifty feet each direction.
Okay.
It's, it's five lots on the smaller lot parts of town.
Mm-hmm.
It means you'd have, you'd have five lots separating Airbnbs on a, on a, on a long street that's already overcrowded with parking.
Mm-hmm. Oh my God, the parking's a whole other thing.
Yeah. Well, actually with John.
Current code though, right?
Yeah, and Michael on the thirty, Michael on the thirty foot lots over there in the small Zanzibar area and stuff, you'd have, well, you'd have eight, you know, eight lots each way on the horizontal, on the, on the small side. So you'd have, so you'd have one house and you'd have eight, eight lots each direction over in the, the flats, so.
Well, to send this into example, I think we probably would have one in like five or six blocks nearly.
Yeah, it would have serious repercussions to the.
Okay, so we've got, so Susan, what's your recommendation?
You know, just thinking in terms of compromising, um, the idea of the parcels or, and I would go a hundred and seventy-five feet, um, linear feet, whichever is greater.
Jesse, where do you, where do you sit?
I was gonna say one fifty, but, uh, to get consensus with Susan, I think I'll say one seventy-five also and three lots, so whichever is greater. I like that.
And I, and I'll change mine to a hundred and seventy-five as well.
Okay. Okay, I, I'll, you know, I was gonna go the one fifty, the three lots plus one fifty. So, uh, but I'll go for consensus, I'll go with three lots plus one seventy-five. And I understand your, your position, Michael. So we've got four one with, uh, three lots plus one seventy-five and then one at a two hundred and fifty foot radius. So do we, can we make that as a, Scott, can we make that in our recommendation?
Yep.
Okay. That's a tough one, guys. This is, this is the crux, the crux of the problem. So, okay, um, I don't think we have any problem with only one short term vacation rental on each property. And then we have seventeen point one, four one point zero five zero, non-conforming short term vacation rentals. Um, do we have any issues? Go ahead.
Well, I have a thought here, so, I mean, obviously Beachcomber track are high performing uh, short term vacation rentals.
Right.
A lot of the correspondence we've heard, a lot of the testimony we've heard are, are folks that have had these ten, fifteen, twenty years. Three years, I mean, it gives them some time to maybe make some other options, but, I mean, they're, they're not gonna go away willingly. So, I mean, I, I imagine this is gonna be the, 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 the drag out fight is gonna be the Beachcomber track. They're, they're not gonna wanna give up that income, and I wouldn't either if I were in their position. So, I mean, I, I gotta, I gotta be honest, but, uh, but at some point, somebody's gonna have to give up something, so, um, I think we ought to just consider that, you know? I, I just wanna say that before we get started, so that's, that's how I feel.
Okay. Okay, the only note I had on this was the guest house definition, and we've, we've tackled that. Um, and I agree with you, Jesse. I think we have two, we've got two competing ideas here. We've got, we've got, these are operating as a business, they're viable businesses that, and they're operating, you know, under, they bought the property, invested their property as was legally applicable at the time. These are not people that are, you know, they're not drilling oil wells in their backyard in the dead of the night, you know, or nothing. So, you know, there, there shouldn't be a vilification of these people because they were playing by the rules. And, um, but rules do change sometimes. So we just have to be considerate of that and considerate of, of what they've done and their, and their financial planning on having these properties and, um, whether they're gonna be using, retiring to them and then taking them off the market at that point, or whether they're, they're gonna stay as, you know, vacation rentals, you know, till the wheels fall off, you know, so.
Right, I guess, I guess just the dates, the, the, the specific, the specificity of the dates here. So it talks about, uh, one year, uh, from the day I imagine it comes back from coastal, it's in effect, Scott, that's what I'm reading. Um, they're gonna conforming within one year of its effective date of the ordinance. And the ordinance isn't official till it comes back to coastal commission, right?
It has to be certified, um, by coastal, the coastal commission. If there were any changes to it, we would have to bring it back through, um, uh, city council, uh, to have them adopt changes to the ordinance before it could become effective. So then it would be thirty days after that.
And then a year from that is the effect, is when these, uh, vacation rentals that are not conforming become non-conforming. That's what I think A says.
It is, it's considered them legal non-conforming until you get into the, you know, the three year process. So it's, so once it's, becomes effective, it considers the ones that are non-conforming for whatever reason as non-conforming, but it says legal in front of it. Um, and then here it has you timing out after that three year, and then if you do the lottery and you lose, then you have another year, so it's three plus one.
So it's four. And I think that's, I think that was not sitting well with a lot of, a lot of folks. I mean, I, I think, I think Joseph actually hit it more on the head with the year, you know, maybe do this at one year rather than three years so that we're not waiting till four years. Four years seems like a very long time. I mean, I get that these folks at Beachcomber have had a, um, a viable business for a long time and I, you know, unfortunately, somebody's gonna have to, somebody's gonna have to, you know, be the windfall of, of, you know, not having it in the future. So, I mean, dragging that out, I don't think is, is that great of an idea either for anybody involved. I mean, the, the, the angst and anxiety of, of, of whether or not you're gonna have this, this revenue stream in four years, you know, I, I think is almost worse than just pulling the Band-Aid off and saying, you know, two years, you know? I, I, I think one year would be a more appropriate number.
Yeah, but Jesse, I'll just comment on this as far as, you also, if you have a one year time period, you're, you're creating a situation where the market may not be at its best or even, it may, one year from now, we don't know what the market's gonna be. If you have a three year time period, then you've got a more appropriate time where you can, if, if your, if your option is that you have to sell, which some of these people will have to do, then, then you'll have a time period where you could, you could recoup because you could time the market a little bit better. But one year timeframe is pretty tight in the real estate game.
Right, but my point being, um, you know, if, if you're, it's not like we're taking their ability to rent this period. We're, we're taking their ability to rent this short term. They can, they can rent these properties for an incredible amount of money. I mean, these, these properties still go for forty-five hundred or five thousand dollars a month on the monthly rental market. I mean, they're still incredibly valuable properties that people are glad to, you know, that folks that work at Cal Poly and the folks that work in San Luis would love to, you know, move to Morro Bay and pay forty-five hundred dollars a month for a monthly rental. I mean, we're, we're putting more, we're putting more housing stock back into the, the, the housing market more rapidly is my point. And I, I don't know, I'm not in favor of the three years. I think that's entirely too long, especially by the time we get this through coastal, back through city council maybe, then, then into thirty days into, in action, and then waiting three years plus one. And, and we're talking literally twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, so I mean, that's entirely too long.
What's your, what's your recommendation then?
I, I mean, if, if one year is too short, I, I, I mean, maybe two years rather than three. I mean, I, I think, I think three years is an extraordinarily long time.
Okay.
I would say the, the three years does a few things. Um, we have quite a bit of turnover in our vacation rental stock every year and fifteen to twenty percent. Um, so a little bit longer lead time will resolve a lot of the conflicts. The closer you make that number, the more confrontation we're going to have through the, um, process of going through a lottery. Um, so the fewer folks you have to, you have to take part, that part, to partake in the lottery, the better from, you know, the city perspective. Um, so there is that to consider, and I think that was also one of the reasons the TBIT board, you know, looking at it, said we should just go through the regular process of attrition because we do have quite a bit of turnover and over time they will eventually come into compliance. Now, that, that's being said, most areas in town, that's the way it'll be. I think, you know, there, it does, you know, I do question that in the, in the beach track, and I think, um, you know, that's been raised several times, um, throughout your deliberation of process, um, both by individual commissioners and by, uh, the city manager.
So this brings up the question of whether we should just, you know, the question of grandfathering and, and allowing, allowing the, the problems to be taken care of through attrition or whether we have the time period. That's probably the first question we need to ask. So let me just go around the room here and quote unquote room and see where you stand, where we stand on that. So Susan, where, where do you stand on whether we just allow it to, to, to handle through attrition or we have a time period?
I feel like we need a time period.
Okay, Jesse?
I feel like we need a shorter time period.
Okay, we'll get to the time period after this. Joseph, where do you sit?
Uh, I definitely think we need a time period. I am, I am opposed to grandfathering.
Okay, Michael?
Absolutely opposed to grandfathering. It permanently puts a negative community piece permanently in that neighborhood.
Okay, now I'll, I'll concur.
May I bring up an important detail that we talked about last time, but maybe be important to this, this discussion?
Sure.
Whether or not we can, they can, um, put the vacation rental in a trust, because if, if it's in a trust and someone passes away, we wouldn't know.
Okay, Scott, can the business license for this vacation rental be going to a trust?
I suppose it could be going to a trust. Um, it, the, the ordinance doesn't differentiate, you know, from that. A trust is an entity that can legally own something. Um, so it could do something along those lines, and you can see folks in the trust change out for various reasons, and, um, and the city wouldn't necessarily know about that. Although we would have contacts as it relates to the trust, right? It's not just a trust that talks to us. There's actually, you're actually required to provide a point of contact for these, and if that were to change out, that would be a red flag.
Couldn't we restrict this to a, could, could we restrict the business license to a, a person, an entity? Is that legally possible?
Well, I mean, from a legal, from a legal standpoint, a trust can own things.
Right.
It can own a house. Um, it can submit an application, you know, to the city for a vacation rental, so.
Well, but.
They have to have a point of contact, so we could base it on them.
Well, don't they have a business license as well?
That's what the, that's what the, the short term rental license is.
Oh, I see.
Jesse, if I may ask, uh, what's, what's your concern about the vacation rental being owned by a trust?
Well, I mean, if it's, so you can't, the, the, if, if Joe Smith owns a vacation rental, he owns it, he has a vacation rental permit and he owns, you know, one of the very productive homes in the beach track, and, you know, uh, he passes away and it's in his trust, I mean, his children could hold on to that, or his heirs could hold on to that permit in perpetuity because we wouldn't know that Mr. Smith's passed away. So it just seems like a loophole to the, to the, you know?
The non-transferability.
Right, the non-transferability.
This is a concern of the, of, of the commission. We can certainly do research on that with the city, with the, with the city attorney's office and bring forward, you know, if there's, you, you know, these three of you that are interested in that, we can bring forward options to the city council, um, to move it forward that way.
Okay, I think that would be, I think we could go with that. I think the general consensus is.
Can I just nod your heads? You want me to do this, please?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just nodding your head. Okay, I got, thank you. All right, we'll do that.
Okay, so then we've got that, uh, that was a good, good point to bring up, Jesse, so, so let's go, and we're all in, we're in concurrence that we, we go for the time limit instead of through attrition. So, um, let's, let's put out numbers for the time period. of through attrition, so let's, let's put out numbers for the time period. So Michael, you get the first shot at this one.
That's one of the few things I don't really have a passionate opinion about. I, you know, have done quite a bit with real estate myself, and so I, I understand the time period, I, I think two or three years is, is fine.
Okay. Okay, Susan?
I would go with the two or three years, and especially, gosh, this year sucks.
Yeah.
So I guess, given this year, I'd say three plus one. I, I think a lot of people are gonna see a lot, you know, they may decide they're just gonna come live in their homes.
This is one of the best-selling real estate times in history.
It's insane, it's insane.
Okay, Jesse, where, where do you sit?
I, I would like to see one, but I, I, I understand the, the discussion, why a longer timeframe would be more appropriate, so I'm gonna say two. So from the enactment of, you know, which granted is gonna take six months, so I mean, I think we have to take that into consideration, Coastal is not the most rapid of organizations in the world, so by the time it gets through Coastal, gets back to, you know, to us, to the city council for, you know, for final approval, that's six months, two years plus the six months, and then another year after that, I think that's plenty of that.
Okay.
So I'd say two years.
And then Joseph?
Yeah, but I, when I mentioned one year earlier, I, that was only with respect to sort of moving the lottery up, I, I, I think, I think it should be two years to the lottery, which gives the owners plenty of time to contemplate, should they stay in the rental business, should they sell, and then for lottery losers, they have another year afterwards to figure out what they're gonna do with their property, and I think that's sufficient time.
Okay, and I will go with the three years is my recommendation, based on, I think if we, if we allow more attrition, we're gonna allow more, we're gonna clean up some of the problems. So, so Scott, it's probably, you know, you know, we're, go ahead.
So it sounds like there's three of you that are in favor of leaving it the way that it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then we've got the, the, moving on to seventeen point four one point zero six zero.
Did we skip ADUs, junior ADUs?
That was part of the, the last, that was the non-conforming, wasn't it?
I thought I had something to say there, let me look at it again.
Yeah, it was the paragraph C, item number three, I believe. Is that it?
Junior ADUs are, oh, no, I guess I was read it wrong the first time I read it, this actually makes a lot of sense, never mind.
They're only permitted for three years, but that's actually handled by state law now.
Right, but there shouldn't be any junior ADUs?
We, we, we're dealing with this, and you see it underneath the non-conforming sections because we're gonna, we're gonna term them out.
Okay. Okay, good, so we're permit application and renewal. So this is where we get into the, you know, the permitting application as far as trusts. So the owner applicant could be the trust, so, so that's where that fits in, so we've already had that discussion. Anybody have any issues on, on the methodology here?
Only, only with signs, I don't know if this is the right place to interject, but I had a, have a note here to talk about signage. So I, I did have an issue with the short-term rental next to me the other day, and I, I didn't want to walk up to the window, peek my head in the windows, I thought I'd probably be arrested for stalking, so putting it near, near the street makes more sense, but, you know, you know, as someone who posts permits and things all the time, I mean, those aren't gonna last very long posted at the street, so we, we need something very durable and very visible, and with, with a set uniform place where it should be, you know, at the front of the lot, maybe issued by the city, steal a medal of some sort that doesn't, you know, fade and, and look terrible. Anyway, I, I think we ought to give some real consideration to the signage.
Okay.
I agree, I think it would be good to have a consistent, readable, and durable sign that, that's easily recognizable, and again, I think that would go a long way towards helping neighbors understand who is legal and who isn't, so.
The sign, the sign requirements are covered under the operational requirements under seventeen forty-one oh nine oh. Okay, so when we get there, we can put the requirements in there?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, the one thing, we'll talk about signage, is that this does mark the property as possibly vacant for long periods of time, so.
I can see five people's living rooms from my living room, so I think you've got plenty of eyes on you in Morro Bay.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, so then, so we're getting to seventeen point four one point zero seven zero, permit denial, suspension, and revocation. Anybody have anything they want to bring up on this?
So, so we were good, so there was nothing else on seventeen forty-one oh six oh other than to, to run down the trust issue?
Yes.
Okay, then, sorry, I was taking notes and doing other things, I did a few or so.
Where would we be putting the concern about things like the outside fire pits and things like that?
It's a good point.
Yeah, because those are a nuisance when they happen all the time, and we're in a place that we've got plenty of fires around here without those.
So we, we have, you know, permit requi, we have requirements related to fire pits in, in the building code, local amendments, chapter fourteen. You can have separate ones in, if you're concerned about them as it relates to vacation rentals, if you don't want to have like wood-burning fire pits, you could put a prohibition on them here. I would imagine the issue related to gas burning ones is probably not really much of an issue, but the wood-burning ones would be, you know, seem to be the concern, am I correct?
I, I just think it would be a, a good thing, we're, we're already talking about the, a higher intensity of use typically than, than you have, and, and people who aren't familiar with the area, or, or, I, I would just feel better if we got rid of as many nuisances as possible from these high-intensity uses.
So I think we would probably put that under that, that section I referenced before where the signs are, because that's the operational requirements, you could just put up prohibition related to wood burning, you know, fireplaces or fire pits.
You know, Scott, I, I'd like to throw out the idea of eliminating the gas fire, fire pits also, they're not very efficient, you know, as far as the green codes and stuff, they're coming up, they're, we're trying to eliminate the use of natural gas as much as possible, or renewables, and then also, I see it as a nuisance, whether it's gas or wood burning, you're gonna have people standing out, out in the backyard, you know, laughing and joking till all hours of the night, because it's a lot more fun, you know, so I would, I would put out there that we'd, that we prohibit all fire pits.
I could, I could possibly entertain the, the wood, the wood-burning ones, but the gas burning ones, I would draw the line, because you can't have s'mores without a, some, some kind of fire.
Barbecue.
I think we should outlaw s'mores.
Girls' house.
I'm the curmudgeon.
Yeah, okay.
Are you thinking of outlawing fire pits for everybody, or just vacation?
Well, no, just for the, just for the vacation rentals.
Boy.
Seems a bit draconian, I'll be honest.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's probably a bridge too far with respect to even the gas, as I can see not wood burning for reasons.
Again, my, my only concern is if, if somebody was out there with their fire pit, and there were one or two people, it'd be one thing, but when we do have these multi-bedroom places that are impacted, you're out, you are out there, like Jerry was saying, with multiple people very late, and even if they're not maybe loud, they're certainly creating smoke, but keeps going on for a long time.
Okay, well, I wanted to throw it out there, it looks like we're at three-two, so I guess that, so we got a prohibition on wood-burning fireplaces, and let's not tell them they can have a gas one.
So we're prohibiting?
Fire pits, I'm sorry.
Wood burning.
Wood burning fire pits.
Well, prohibiting wood burning, but gas is gonna be okay.
I don't think so, but three of the other people think that it is okay.
I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead with gas, I'll go in with gas, does that make it three?
No, you're, you're, you're the, you're the, you're with me on the minority here. So, so we got three for wood, three, three are, are, all five are against wood, three are, or two of us are against gas, and so, yes, gas are allowed.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, can we go back to seventeen forty-one oh seven oh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, would this be the point where we would have complaint, whereas the city is responsible for notifying the filer of the complaint of the, of how it, I'm getting late, I'm sorry.
Being able to track the, the actual complaint.
Be able, so that the, the person filing the complaint can track the complaint and its resolution. I've heard that several times from people.
As well as fines, about defining fines and, and steps in the, in the ordinance, I think it's defined somewhere, I've seen it, but I, I don't, I don't know if it's defined in this.
Well, I think we don't want to define the, the absolute dollar fines because then it would have to go back through Coastal Commission to change it.
Yeah, I think we're doing a fine. They have to go find the section now.
I would, yeah, I'm just, I mean, I'm not, I'm not complaining, I'm just kind of reiterating what, you know, several of the, maybe, maybe fifty emails we got, it, it was listed several times that the fines should be enumerated.
Yeah, and I, I do, isn't that something council determines, fines and penalties and fees, or is that something?
It, it, it can be part of that, or it can be separate, we have, we have fines in different sections of our municipal code, related to nuisance and those types of things, we can have specific ones related to set by the city's fee schedule for vacation rentals. I, I have to go back and look now, I found a little bit of a blank, I apologize on what it says in here now.
Well, kind of speaking from my, my opinion, I mean, in, you know, dealing in enforcement, fines are always a last resort, you mean, you never want to start with fines, but I think, you know, the overwhelming sentiment I was getting from the community was that's where they want us to start, but that's just not, that's the best way to, to enforce.
Yeah, we have the, we have the, you know, it talks about, this is section seventeen forty-one one-ten, so we're not there yet. I'm gonna go back, so we'll talk about fines. So it doesn't go into forty-one oh seven oh, can we look at seventeen forty-one oh seven oh? I'm getting whipped up.
I, I think what's missing from there is how, let's see, permit denial, suspension, and revocation, so how complaints are recorded, and we, we did as a, a group have a lot of discussion about some things are worse than others, so noise complaints every single weekend is perhaps more of a problem and an issue than the fact that the garbage cans got left out for an extra twelve hours. Excessive parking in, you know, that was off-site could be more of a problem, especially in some of our neighborhoods that have the narrow streets and very little parking available. So, you know, I think having a, a central place to record those complaints, and then there was discussion of how many, like, how many strikes and you're out, kind of thing.
The strike and you're out is confirmed non-compliance, okay? So we get a lot of complaints, I would say less than half of them actually rise to the level of violation of the municipal code.
Right.
I'd probably say less than thirty percent of them, really, but, because we get complaints about all kinds of things, that people think should violate some law or, or, or something, but don't, you know, that's just, that's just the nature of the beast, really. So, I'm not sure where you want to go with that, but it does have parameters in here for that, but they would be confirmed violations that we would be looking at. We do track complaints in the manner that I said, on our city's website, the service requests, attack, you know, link on there, tracks it, and, and we can interact back and forth with the folks that are complaining, they're making the complaint, and letting them know what happens there. Short of that, if they come in via phone, then the way we would track them is we have to just contact them back, and keep track of them, you know, more manually. What happens is they get, the part that we do for code enforcement is called city sourced, it's attached to our project tracking system, which is City Works, and so when we have, we'll do an initial investigation on a complaint, and if it turns out that there's some validity to it, we'll log it into city sourced, and so that's how we track them, and they're tracked by complaint type. So our code enforcement officer puts them in there when they rise to that level, sometimes he goes out there and immediately looks at something and says, well, no, that's, that's not a violation, so he doesn't put it in there because it would skew results of later searches, so. We have that capability now, we've been using it for, since two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, I think that there was definitely a discussion of frivolous complaints, you know, and, and that people didn't want those to be included in the numbers that might cause them to lose their license, and also that whoever's managing the property, whether it's property management company or the owner, had to respond to that complaint within, I think, an hour, hours worth of time, at least respond to it, not necessarily resolve it, because you could understand that the resolution might take a little longer, but.
Nowhere in here do I see anything about PD responding, so, you know, PD's continually having to respond to the same vacation rental, or, you know, maybe they have six in a year, you know, responses, or requests for service out on a specific vacation rental, I mean, I'm wondering if that ought to be some sort of trigger to, hey, what's going on out there? Why do you guys need service all the time?
If that was happening somewhere, PD would contact code enforcement, myself, regularly, and say, hey, can you do something about this, we're tired of getting calls. We do, we do actually talk internally among departments, pretty regularly.
Right, but I was just wondering, putting it in, putting in the, the reasons you could suspend or revoke a permit, I mean.
I think, well, that's a, that's a good comment, Commissioner Perone, I, I think that's what we would do, that's what I was mentioning when, like, how we take in the information, we find something to be valid, we put it into city sourced, and we say what the outcome of the investigation is for the complaint, so we would take that from PD, PD's calling us and saying, hey, can you take care of this? And we would be, yep, sure, we'll go investigate it, and take whatever information they give to us in their report, and then continue forward, so that would get logged into, to city source, and at some point would either be, it's validated, and this is an actual violation, and we send them a violation letter, and that would be, you know, strike one, or it would be determined that we did the investigation, it didn't rise to the level, or it wasn't, something was a violation of the municipal code, and we would close it out, and it would say that, and that's a searchable thing, we could search on vacation rental violations, and we can look at them, and we can see the number that were validated, the ones that weren't.
Okay, are we satisfied on that?
I think so, I think if you look at F and G, grounds for suspension and grounds for revocation, it kind of deals with serious and very serious activities that would be responded to.
And there's an appeal process that, that works through the city manager's office, so I mean, there's, there's recourse for those as well, so. You get a full, you get a full process.
Right, get a hearing.
And that's what the next, the next section deals with, is the appeals, permit denial, suspension, or revocation.
I think that's fine.
Seventeen point four one point zero eight zero, anybody have any changes or issues on that one? Jesse, do you?
No, I said no.
Okay, then moving to seventeen point four one point zero nine zero, operational requirements.
I'm sure Michael would love to talk about parking, and he's not here. Should we wait for him?
We'll come back to that.
I, I do think, I, I think we go with it, no off-site or other street parking, parking all has to be on-site, so if it's... So if it's a four-bedroom house, and you've got two people per bedroom, and there's only places to park two cars, they have to come in two cars. And that's something that I think most of our management agencies will monitor. They are checking for the license plates of the cars that are coming in and making sure everybody's valid, and they have all the information. There was one letter we got that talked about folks from the campground coming up and parking along Beach Comer, so they wouldn't have to pay for their extra car at the campground, that's something, somebody probably should be dealing with it, some other, you know, some, some other group here, but I, I just, I think there should be no parking outside of the legal parking spaces on the property and not on the street.
And that's what it says here.
And that's what it says here.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jesse. Okay, so my, I, I, I like that, I like that, that thought, enforcement. So our, our code enforcement officers aren't going to be out there on Friday night at midnight, you know, checking to see if there's more than two cars sitting in that vacation rental. I, I, I really think that these vacation rental people do their best, the managers do their best, but they can't, you know, they have eight to ten or twelve throughout the city, they can't really continually be driving by and looking to see how many cars are on their side, how many should be on their side. I really think it's an enforcement issue, so I had, I had a thought, if we could have our citizens that have complaints take pictures and submit that somehow through the complaint process, that would go a long way. That's, I mean, I mean, it's not, you know, I don't know, evidence that would stand up in court of law, but I mean, it's some sort of, something.
Well, the photos can be time, timestamp, they, they usually have time data and GPS data. And I think that's a good idea, you know, the more, the more data that's, that's sent in with a complaint, the better it's going to be. And then, but one of my pet peeve here is we've got, you know, what I'm seeing is people paving their front yard completely to allow six cars to be parked there, you know, that's, I, I think that's getting around, that's, that's good for the neighborhood.
Are people doing that? Have we actually seen that?
Well, I've, I've seen it, yep.
Okay.
I think I have to recuse myself from this one, because somebody's driveway may be over paved, so.
Are, are, are there, you know, design regulations that specify how much of a front yard must remain unpaved, or am I wrong about that?
We have a, we have a code as to how much of the, the front yard or the front access has a, a curb cut in.
We have, we have a limitation at the driveway width, but as you're probably well aware, we have lots of, lots of, you know, places in town with no curbs, gutters and sidewalks. And we also, for whatever reason, somebody thought Morel Bay, one time when it was being made, was going to have really large, wide streets, and so we have right-ofways in some areas of town that are eighty feet wide, but not paved to that, and they don't have curbs and gutters and sidewalks, and so you have ten plus feet of unimproved right-ofway that folks have paved in many different ways, you know, and that's not uncommon. In many instances, our public works department is giving them encroachment permits to do some of this work. So some of them are permitted, some of them are not. Whether those would constitute legal parking spaces as it relates to those ordinance is somewhat questionable because they would be in the right-ofway. So probably not, this would really mean parking spaces in a garage or on a driveway that's actually on the property, not, not on these areas that are, that are paved right-ofway.
Could say covered parking.
And we're going away from that in the draft code, so.
I just said could.
I think we need, we need to specify that these parking spaces cannot, you know, should be, should be legal. With our design guidelines, we were trying to get away with that, you know, we've got, we had specifications for what the driveway should look like.
And we, we use those, and the draft code actually is more prescriptive, and it has landscape requirements in it actually, you know, for single-family homes, as opposed to paving everything over. But with that, it's not in place yet, but it will be with the new code. But it does say legal parking spaces, only parking spaces that were approved along with the home, and it wouldn't count things that are in the right-ofway, so I don't think we have an issue there necessarily.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, the weather, the paving, the whole frontage thing is a separate issue.
You know, I've seen three, three properties in the last two weeks completely pave their whole front yard.
Is that something code enforcement could pick up when they do their initial inspection of the property and say, hey, you know, you really have a driveway that can accommodate two cars, but you paved over your whole front yard, and that's not okay?
That's exactly what we would do. So if they're required to give us a plan that shows where their parking spaces are approved, and we would go look at it, and like, no, that's nothing that was ever approved, and you're two, you get two here, and that's it, and that's the way we would look at it.
Well, I, I have a little bit of a problem with that, so, let's just say, well, I live, the street on the bottom, I won't say which street, you guys all know which street, but anyway, you have a driveway and a garage, you have room for two cars in your garage, two cars in the driveway, but you also have a little bit of room in your front of your house, in, in front of your house to park a car, I mean, and, you know, the kind of the, the gentleman's agreement we all have around here is you don't park in front of somebody else's house, and because we're, it's very limited, but we're saying that the vacation rental couldn't park in front of their own house.
Correct, correct.
Somebody's going to park there.
Well, first of all, I want to apologize, I've got a very sick dog that I had to take care of here tonight, a single, single father tonight. The, one thing that concerns me is, if you look at the way the definitions are, you're allowed people beyond the number of bedrooms, and so if you're basing it on bedroom parking spaces, you have this kind of surplus that those extra two people could be children or they could be other adults. And so to me, the bedroom parking relationship means you can't start using the surplus space that's for guests and these other people who are on couches or whatever it is to get the total figure that they have, you have to confine it to the, the way the property's set up. And, and I'd be very concerned, are, are we allowing the, the use of garages for part of the home in some of this, are we requiring there to be garages when people have these rentals that are the whole house? It's not like an ADU, somebody set up in a garage, you know, it's the, it's the house itself.
It, it limits the parking to onsite legal parking spaces, I mean, that's, I mean, you, you don't get to park offsite, you don't get to park on the street, and if you have the situation that Commissioner Lucas you do, and you have a, your house is next door to you with several bedrooms, and they only have, they only had parking spaces, they don't have a garage, and they only have two parking spaces in the driveway, well, that's how many cars they can have. And so you have a self-limiting factor there. In your instance, they have a garage and the driveway that they can park in, I suppose, so.
No garage, it's been turned into a man cave.
Well, I mean, I, I think most people around here have two cars, so if you're, if you're, if you're doing a hosted, and, you know, you and your partner have a car each, and then you have a hosted vacation rental, and your, your guest comes, there's really no, there's no third spot for them to park, I mean, we're kind of setting people up to failure, I think, I, I mean, parking in front of your own house, I think, should be allowed.
So I, I'd ask Susan to weigh in on this with the committee, I, I know they talked about this quite a bit, I was on the tail end of a couple of those conversations, but wasn't at all of them, and our recollection is, you know, part of that conversation centered on one of the major complaints related to vacation rentals is taking up parking on the street. I, I don't know if I'm mischaracterizing that, but I, at least that was part of one of those conversations that I was present for with the committee.
No, I think that's true. I suppose if it's a, a homestay where the, it's hosted, maybe the host parks his car on the street or her car on the street, and the guest can be in the driveway, you know, people tend to know their neighbors' cars, we all recognize each other's cars, but people were pretty, on, on all sides, were pretty clear about the parking needing to be onsite in legal spaces. And again, the, the folks who are managing these properties really educate their tenants about this, all, all of these things. I mean, there was a point where I, I almost thought maybe we needed to require vacation rentals to have a professional property manager, just because they gave them the, the list of the things they should and shouldn't do, and the be nice to your neighbor, the good neighbor brochures, they told them how and where they could park, and the noise ordinances and the trash things, and overall, I think they're a group of people who really, you know, they want to do good business, so. But I would say that the onsite off-street parking was pretty important for everybody.
Yeah, and I agree, I think most of the complaints, other than noise and gas fire pits, is going to be from the parking, you know. You know, in areas like where Michael and I live, there, we have, there's all the parking on one side of the street. So, you know, so it's critical that you have all of the parking be onsite in legal parking spaces. Okay, so I think we have consensus on that, or at least for one. So then, Michael, did you have anything else on this section? It was seventeen point forty-one point zero nine zero?
I, I, again, I, I just, so people are aware, again, if you've got this two individuals per bedroom plus two, you know, you've got four or five-bedroom house, that's, that's twelve people, if you, if you've got other kinds of accommodations, it could be even more than that. So this, this basically means that these ones that are high occupancy ones across the face of the year, really, are, are, in my opinion, functioning as, as like you're next to duplex or a triplex.
I had a thought on that. So, I mean, if, if, if you have a situation like where Michael, Michael does, you know, and while you were gone, Michael, we talked about the possibility of taking pictures to demonstrate to code enforcement, hey, here's the problem. You know, there's plenty of parking lots around town that, you know, like, thinking of Spencer's, and I'm thinking of Albertson's, you could park your cars, and, you know, you say, say folks came from the Bay Area and they had, you know, eight people and six cars, you could park four of them somewhere in a long-term lot, and, you know, just all carpool back to the, to the short-term vacation rental with two, you know, so I mean, I, I think there's a solution for these, for these problems, and I think, you know, offering these solutions to our, to our management folks, say, hey, here's how you comply, and here's how, here's how we're going to ask you to comply, and we're going to take pictures, and if you, you know, if you're not complying, then we're going to have an issue, so. That's my thought.
Well, yeah. Well, I mean, that's a, that's a solution, I can recall in Europe or some of the bed-and-breakfast have precisely that, you, you drive to the local market, park your car, and take the bus back to your bed-and-breakfast, but it's complicated, I, I think we ought to try, we ought to try the simpler thing first, which is put all your cars on the property and, and not on the parkway, and see if that isn't too cumbersome.
Well, I'm saying, but if you have too many cars there, you have to get to put them somewhere, and they had, they had to get to Morel Bay somehow, but then, you know, they can take a couple cars back, they can all pile in a couple cars and drive.
But that presumes that people can't plan in advance, if you have too many cars, then it should be incumbent on those people to carpool to their destination and live by the rules. And that might not work, I get it, but we have to, I think we ought to try to achieve that.
That's what would be clear for the record, I'm, I'm not complaining about the parking of the people who are in, in my, my neighbor's vacation rental, that's, that's an excellently managed place, it's immaculately taken care of, but they, they occasionally do have people that come to visit while they're there, and those people do park on the street, and I'm just saying that I don't want to have the parking on the street be part of the required parking for the number of bedrooms, because people will have guests and visitors and things like that, so you have to have some kind of surplus to help manage some of those, those, those things that even on a well-run, you know, B and B are going to, or, you know, vacation rental are going to happen.
Well, the limiting factor at this point is going to be the number of legal parking spaces. And if they, if they, if they overtax the neighborhood and there's continual complaints, then, then they're going to lose their license, and they're going to lose their permit, and that's the way it should be. Okay, so moving on to seventeen point four-one point one hundred, advertising.
Oh, Jerry, I, I wanted to, I wanted to say something about the, isn't this, isn't that the previous one about the, the max, about the maximum number of occupants, or am I wrong? Where is that?
Yeah, that's, gee.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I'm leaning towards there being a maximum number so that, I, I mean, I don't know if there's any house in Morel Bay that is short-term vacation rental and has six bedrooms or five bedrooms, but I, but, you know, I, as, as Commissioner Lucas was saying, you know, a neighboring house with twelve guests, and then they're invited guests for the day, it's not really a, it's a, it's a hotel, it's a boarding house, it's a hotel.
I feel like Maggie Jerron said that their largest place had, had allowed eight, so some, no? Okay, I'll say no.
I've got, I've got six cars next door sometimes.
I, I was leaning towards something as a maximum of eight adults, and then the, the very young children not being included in that, in that total. And I, 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 you know, it, it would, it would be, you know, the burden of proof should sometimes be placed on the other side, I, I would like someone to demonstrate that having only eight guests in a vacation home is too burdensome to be able to continue to operate.
Scott, is there any legal restriction on us putting an upper limit on occupancy?
No, not that I'm aware of.
And so, I just, you know, I think, so we're, you know, I think it's a good idea to have upper, upper limit on occupancy, just wherever we put it. We would still have the two-per-bedroom maximum, but with a maximum of how, how many, so if somebody's got a five-bedroom house, one of the, you know, one of the communications I had was to, people said that they, that their, their neighbor went from a, it was sold as a three-bedroom house, and they're now advertising it as a six-bedroom house. So, you know, they may not be legal bedrooms, but they're advertising it as a six-bedroom house, so, you know, he's saying there's twelve or fourteen people that are, that are staying there, so maybe we should have an upper, upper limit, just where do we want to put that limit?
Well, you know, I, if, if I were a homeowner and I bought a home next to a five-bedroom house, my expectation would not be that there were ten adults that were going to be living in that home for any length of time. So I, I think, I, I think sometimes you do have to give weight to what are the reasonable expectations of all the people in the community.
I, I think, I, I mean, I, I hate to be the, the, the single exclusion here, but I think we also have to take into account cultural differences here, and, you know, I'm Hispanic, people of Hispanic lineage, we're generation, we live generationally, so, I mean, my household, I have three generations, sometimes four, you know, depending who's here, you know, we have, you know, you know, you could have a grandmother, a mother, you know, three kids, and maybe their grandkids, I mean, there could be four generations, but that, that's a household, and that, and that may, that may be the household they live in when they're, you know, home, and, you know, wherever they're from. And other cultures do similar things, where they live generally, generationally. So, I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't put an upper limit on the occupancy, but I think we ought to also take into consideration that not everybody lives the same way, not everybody uses housing the same way.
Jesse, the difference, the difference is that you're not running that as a business.
I don't disagree, I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative here, I just want to make sure that we're, at least, at least considering the, considering the way other cultures use housing is somewhat different than what some of us maybe use, so I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, so, I mean, when we're.
I, I understand, it's also, this is for, to the people that are renting, this is short-term, you're getting people from, you know, they're, they're coming here because we're halfway between, you know, San Francisco in the north and LA in the south or something, you know, so, you know, they, they can get the whole family here, but. you know, they can get the whole family here, but do we want, do we want to encourage that into our neighborhoods? You know, so maybe there should be an upper limit.
I don't disagree that there should be an upper limit, I just, I think eight may be a bit much, I don't know.
You know, I hear you. First of all, you're talking to a Sicilian by ancestry, so I'm no strength, really extended family. Yeah, perhaps, maybe I could see where eight is, perhaps ten is the fair number, but I would, I don't think I would go above ten.
But that would require a four-to-five-bedroom house.
Right, and I don't think we're talking, yeah, a thousand square feet and two bedrooms, but I think we're talking the bigger, the bigger, you know, if the house accommodates, you know, some of these households in America are, you know, ten, twelve people and they may be, you know, a group of parents, you know, another group of parents and, you know, they're all nuclear family, but they're just several generations of nuclear families. So, I think we ought to at least account for that possibility.
Well, it does say in G on page fourteen, occupancy, two individuals per bedroom plus two, and those are adults. The kids are, young kids are excluded, so.
Adults, but it's any kid over three. I mean, a lot of families travel with their children, even up to their teenagers.
I'm well aware of that.
And I think we ought to make some exceptions here for nuclear family. I mean, if, you know, if you're for college buddies trying to get together with your wives, maybe that's a little different than, you know, a group of grandparents coming down and, you know, getting together with their kids and their, you know, things like that.
Well, the other thing, Jesse, too, is this is, once again, this is gonna be complaint-driven. If they have fifteen people in the house and there are no problems whatsoever and they're, you know, they're all in bed by, you know, seven-thirty at night and, you know, I don't think there's gonna be a problem. But if you're gonna have, you could have four people in the house and disrupt the whole neighborhood, you know, shooting off fireworks and, which we've been hearing a lot of lately, you know, and everything, so.
I take it.
So, I think if people are, I think we need an upper limit just to say that, okay, this is a, this is a set point, you know, but if the people have more and they're taking care of everything, I don't think it's a problem, they're not gonna have a problem.
You're probably right. I was just kinda making the, you know, the cultural distinction here, so.
Well, yeah, just to let you know, too, that there are ten kids in my family.
Exactly.
I know about big households. So, where do we want to put this? Do we want to put this at eight, ten as a maximum, maximum number?
I would just like to stick with having an inspection of the home, which will be happening for, you know, identifying how many bedrooms it has and how many parking spaces. And if they can't park the people who are there and they can't put them in proper beds and proper rooms with proper egress, then it's, they've gone over their limit. So, I don't, I don't know if I want, I don't know. How many houses do we have that are over five bedrooms that are vacation rentals?
Probably not legal bedrooms.
Well, if they're not legal, though, then they're not going to be permitted when it comes to that initial inspection.
Okay.
And so, not only in their agreement that this is the number they can have, and then if you catch them, wow, I saw, you know, twelve people go into a three-bedroom house and they didn't come out till the next morning, you know, but.
Let me just go back real quickly. Under the operational requirements, maybe whenever this, it says must provide sufficient onsite parking, onsite parking spaces for their guests. What's that mean? Is it one per bedroom?
No.
No.
I think if, say they have three bedrooms, but they only have two parking spaces, that's it, you get two parking spaces. So, people have to carpool.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about this, Michael, while you were going.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. But we basically said that there's legal part, these are legal onsite parking spots. If somebody paved their whole front yard illegally, those spaces will not count. You know, so, or for the terms of this disorderance.
But the four-bedroom place can't, doesn't have to show four parking spaces?
No, they don't, but they can only, if they only have two parking spaces, then they can only park two cars. If they park, if they have any more cars that show up, then they're in default or they're in, they violated their agreement and they can lose their permit for it.
Why would we not want to tie it to the bedrooms? I guess if it's already been decided, that's fine, but.
Well, we didn't want to tie it to the bedrooms because there may not be enough, there may not be legal parking spaces for four cars. You know, it would be up to them to either carpool and show up, show those four-bedroom occupancies in two cars that could be legally parked on the site. So, that may be the limiting factor. Or they, or like Jesse said, they park it down on, you know, down on, you know, some commercial parking lot overnight and carpool up from there or something.
I'm fine to go with what was discussed, but I think that's gonna be the largest complaint-driven thing we're gonna have, is you're gonna see people renting to people who are gonna bring five, six cars to a place that will hold twelve people, whether it has one space, two spaces, or six spaces.
And then that'll be good, that'll be grounds for them, that'll be a violation of their permit and then they will, then they will lose their permit to host.
You know, I wonder, I wonder if we were to have some kind of, what do you call it? You know, a tag that fits in the car? Now, admittedly, you know, that wouldn't solve the problem, but it would put the onus on the owner. He has to make sure that his guests put their tags in their cars and if they don't, I mean, might be.
I wondered about that parking permit, something that goes on the dashboard or hangs on the rearview mirror.
Yeah, I mean, somebody, a wrongdoer is gonna park his car where he shouldn't and not put the permit on that, but it would be clearly, clearly, you know, another piece of evidence in that it's a violation. I'm just thinking of ways to make it easier to.
Yeah, I just, you know, you know whose cars belong on your street in front of your house. You know, I think it's easy, pretty easy to say that, you know, if they've got Colorado plates or something on them and they showed up on Friday night, they're probably not, you know, not the new neighbors, you know, so. Okay, so, let's see, where are we now? I'm sorry.
Never did get an occupancy limit, but I think we all kinda came to ten.
Yeah, I think, I think ten's probably the upper limit.
Okay.
And, and once again.
Do I have, can I get three of you saying that ten is the cap? Please.
Yep.
All right. Okay, I got three, thank you.
I'll move this thing along and say ten.
Okay, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so, anything else in the operational?
The sign is in here, the sign piece is okay.
Okay.
I think we can be a little more, well, okay, so, a couple of questions here, I guess. Who's providing the sign? Is that?
We're gonna call the template for them.
Yeah, I think they have to pay for it themselves, but there would be a template that is recognized as this is Moro Bay City's sign for a vacation rental.
For sure. But are we talking like the, you know, the little aluminum, not the aluminum, but the little like signs we see for, you know, elections? Are we talking about like metal signs or are we?
The corrugated plastic things are, you know, they'll last for a few months, but it wouldn't last a season. So, it would have to be a regular sign. You probably don't want something that's as large as like the, you know, the notification signs for our public meetings, those are fairly large and kind of obnoxious, but they're meant to be, right? So, people see them. These need to be a little more subdued, meaning people know you're supposed to have them so they don't look for them, but they don't need to probably, you know, be gigantic and twenty-four by thirty-six and that type of thing. I think the neighborhood doesn't want to see that either, right? So, we need to come up with something that's a little, it's like understated, but clearly visible.
And I think the location should basically be about the, you know, should be at the address, you know, somewhere around posting it near where the address is.
I think it needs to be at the street so you don't have to walk up to the property.
I think it should be on the mailbox.
Well, can't put it on the mailbox.
Next to the mailbox.
Yeah, next to the mailbox. But the closer it is to the street, the more damage it's probably gonna get and the more variability of where it would be placed.
Next to the driveway.
About within five feet of the front property line. Visible from the street.
Yeah. Visible and legible from the street.
Yeah. Now, the other thing, too, is do we, are we gonna have a, you know, a pull-down menu item on the city website where somebody can access all of the, you know, all of the complaint departments, all of the, you know, the places where they can do their notifications, file a complaint, find out who the, you know, who the contact, emergency contact information is, is that all gonna be on the website, on the city website?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Law, what was that? I thought we were talking about signs, I might have.
Okay, you know, the modern-day sign is basically the city website. So, is the city going to host on its website a pull-down menu for vacation rentals where then somebody could go in there and then file a complaint to that site, to that? Also, find out if the, if, where there's pretty cars parked and people partying all night, whether that's a legal vacation rental? And then if so, who the contact information is or?
So, we will, so we will, we've committed to, you know, having the list of current vacation rentals posted on the website. We would have the, under our vacation rental page that we'll probably be creating for this. It'll also have information related to filing a complaint, the hotline number. The hotline number will be a requirement on the contact thing that we have folks put out there, so it'll be the, it'll be the twenty-four-hour contact number. It'll also be that complaint number that we're gonna run through Host Compliance. Well, both of those on there for folks in case they call the twenty-four hour and they don't get any response, they can call the, our hotline number and at least, you know, know that they filed a complaint with the city so we can follow up.
So, Host Compliance is the vendor, right?
Correct, I'm sorry, yes, that's correct.
And do they have an app, I wonder?
I'm not sure, I have to look.
That would be outstanding if it did.
I'll, I'll check.
Okay, good. We good on signage then, guys?
Just one more stupid thing, maybe, I'm the last person, I'm the light-eyed on the panel. But what about one of these, are they called QR tags that you put your phone on them and it tells you everything about the nature of the rental? You know, everything's got that tag that you purchase anymore, that you can, you can look at it in the store and find out anything you want to know about it.
If the vendor had an app and the QR code is very simple to make, I'm sure we could, I'm sure the city could work that into their template.
I'm not sure Host Compliance has an app. I mean, we just recently, you know, acquired their services and that wasn't something that they ever, you know, talked to us about.
No, that might be something that property managers might want to add, you know, that links back to their site, because they want to be the ones dealing with these issues quickly. I mean, I think you could allow that to be added to the sign.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And there, you know, tomorrow there may be something, something else that would work. There was the RFDI, RFID for a while, now the QR code and there's gonna be something new tomorrow, you know, barcodes or whatever, so. So, I think we need to be able to keep it, you know, additive and keep it up to date. So.
Well, I'm looking at their website right now, it's rather, it's rather well-done, so even if they didn't have an app, I'm sure our mobile devices could navigate their website pretty well, so.
Okay, cool. Okay, we good on signage then? Anything, we didn't really get a location for the signage, but visible from the street would probably be the best terminology.
I think visible, we'll make it be visible and legible from the street, yeah.
There you go.
We trust you.
Okay, okay, so seventeen point four-one point one hundred is advertising. Any questions on that?
Not unless we have a good way to weed out the non-licensed vacation rentals. Did we, anybody think about anything we could do?
Well, the biggest, I think the biggest issue we're gonna have, or the biggest issue we have now, is that we're gonna have people privately renting them to, you know, to their buddy's buddy. And it's all gonna be, you know, fax in the mail or something, I don't think it's gonna be going through the apps.
Right.
So, I think that's, that is an issue here where a lot of the problems reside. But, you know, and I don't know how to catch that. Scott, do you have any ideas on that?
I mean, those are, you know, probably half the complaints that we get are actually second homes that are being used by friends and family. I don't have a great way to, you know, to get at that, you know, whether they're doing something to the side. I mean, it's not gonna be super prevalent, though, because, I mean, like you'd have to have a pretty wide network of folks that would be willing to pay you to rent through, I'm not sure what. Usually you're going through some, you know, some hosting application to, you know, advertise your rental in some way, shape, or form, at which point we'd probably be able to find it. So, I don't know. I will say it's not something I've given a lot of thought about. You're talking about, you're talking about, you know, policies or ordinances to affect how people use, you know, their second homes in town and I guess there probably are things we can come up with, it's just not something I've spent a lot of time on.
So, Scott, is there, if a property has multiple complaints where the police have been involved, you know, for excessive partying or noise or something in the middle of the night or, you know, on weekends, is, does the city track that or how do?
We do.
Okay. Well, it seems to be.
And it can fall under two different sections of our municipal code that you're gonna get into in the next section of the ordinance, which is seventeen forty-one one-ten, and it can be either misdemeanor and infraction or under the public nuisance section, or it can be apprehended as an infraction or the other thing, misdemeanor. So, those are options for, you know, any violation of municipal code and it just depends on how we want to, you know, go down the road with that. And certainly, you know, if the behavior continues, we can take it to court to have the behavior stopped.
So, if, I'm wondering if PD shows up to a problem, non-vacation rental, so a second home that they just loan out to folks, it's a problem, let's just hypothetically say, and continually the PD shows up in the home, the actual owner of the property is never there. That seems like something that's definable that we could use to say, okay, well, you're never at this house and it's a problem. So, I mean, could we start assessing fines that way?
If it falls within the nuisance parameters of the city's municipal code, then yes. And, you know, that's noise and disruption to the neighborhood, loud music, all those types of things that, whether it's you staying in the house of your own or rent or whatever you're doing, or it's you're letting your family stay there and they're doing it, same thing, it applies to all of those things and we can fine you for those, issue citations, all that kind of stuff, you know, all the way up to hand-taking you to court to make you stop doing them, so.
But we could separate it out for people that are partying at their own house and people that are loaning out their other, loaning out their house to be part of that.
I don't, and I don't know why we would. It's not prevalent. I mean, these are complaints that we have are not prevalent, you know, that come into our office about that type of thing.
Oh, I think, I think I misunderstood. I thought I heard somebody say that this was over half of the complaints we get is the second homes.
About half of them, but it's about half of the handful of complaints I get related to vacation rentals a year.
Okay.
And a half a dozen, maybe less.
Oh, well.
A bit more now, since this is, you know, it's current.
I thought we were talking about like fifty or sixty, so.
No, I mean, we get under, I mean, literally, it's about a half a dozen complaints a year related to vacation rentals and half end up being, they're not vacation rentals, they're a second home. Because we have a lot more second homes in town, like over twenty percent of our houses in town, so.
Okay. Okay, so we good on seventeen forty-one one-ten? Any other issues on that? Okay, at this point then, we're moving on to section four, sequel finding, and we're talking about legal definitions here. So, and then section five is severability and then section. So, and then section five is separability, and then section six is effective date, which is 30 days after its adoption. Its adoption would be after the postal commission approval, I, I imagine.
Yep.
And then certification, and then we're, somebody's got to sign it, so.
Okay, so, um, I think you've gone through all of it. Um, you know, want to go over the things, the changes that we're making, so I'm going to run back through those quickly. And then we'll need a, uh, we'll need a motion, a second recommendation onto city council, for adoption with the changes, okay?
Okay.
All right, so the first change was, um, scroll back up here, hold on a second. Uh, what do we got? Uh, we're keeping the, so we, we differentiated the short term rentals that are part of apartments. We're not going to have them in residential zones.
Correct.
And, but we are, the one, the apartments that are in our mixed use and commercial areas can operate at the same, uh, the, the proposed language, which is the one per eight, uh, um, number in the draft.
Correct, the density.
Yep.
Numbers, yes.
Um, guest houses are okay as a, as a home share.
Yes.
Uh, we're changing the cap to 175.
Yes.
Um, we're going to do the, uh, the distance, uh, linearly, um, you know, for the separation between, uh, the, uh, short term rentals is going to be three lots or 175 linear feet, whichever is greater.
Plus the adjacencies, the diagonals and the rest of that.
Correct, correct. All those same things, just making that one change, okay. Um, we're going to look up the, uh, the question related to the trust, uh, have the city attorneys research that. Um, next change is, um, we're going to add a prohibition on wood burning fire pits.
Yes.
Uh, we're going to place a maximum cap at 10 folks, um, over age of three.
Yes, and then still have the restrictions on two per bedroom.
Correct. Yeah, this is an addition.
Speaking of, is the inspector going to get a floor plan?
Yes. Uh, oh, uh, section K is the, is the sign section and we were going to, we were going to add language to that to say that the location of the signage would be, uh, clearly visual, visible and legible from the street. Was there anything else that you wanted in that section?
We were talking about having a template and adding the appropriate technology.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's kind of internal, um, for us. I have that written down here in notes as well underneath, not as a change to the ordinance. Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, that's it. So I can take a motion, uh, in, uh, in a second and, uh, to move this forward with the changes as noted.
Okay, well, uh, I'll give the, give it a whirl here. So I move that, uh, the planning commission forward a favorable, favorable slate, sorry about that, uh, recommendation to the city council, um, for ordinance of the city of Morabey, meaning the local coastal program, uh, adding chapter 17.41, short term vacation rentals of title 17 of the Morabey municipal code relating to the permitting operation and short term, of short term vacation rentals and repealing chapter 5.47, uh, short term vacation rental of title five.
With the changes as noted?
With the changes as noted, uh, and agreed to by the chair.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Go ahead. Okay, so Susan has a second, so, uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say I, I appreciate everything Susan and her colleagues did on the, on the, um, group that put this forward, the draft forward. I, I, I appreciate the people who've managed these things well in the city, uh, but I, I have grave reservations about the distance, uh, issue that we were putting forward and I, and because of that I'm going to be voting no.
Good. Any other further comment or discussion? Okay, uh, Scott, you, could you call the question, please?
Sure. Uh, Commissioner Baran.
Hi.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Grapia.
Hi.
Commissioner Lucas.
No.
Chair Law.
Yes.
Motion passes four, one, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. This is a tough one. There's, you know, a lot of, a lot of conflicting, you know, interests and they're all trying to make, you know, a better community too, you know, so that's the tough part. So, so Susan, thank you for all your work on that, you know, and.
Thank you.
We really look to, we really look to you for your opinion on things, uh, when, when I didn't know where to go, I just looked to you and I just kind of said, okay, well, that's probably where I should be.
It was a challenge because I will tell you, there were folks going into it that just thought we shouldn't have any in a residential district because it's a business.
Yep.
But, you know, we listened to all sides and tried to find our common ground, so. It was a great group, it was a really good group, but it was challenging and it still is challenging, so we'll see where it goes next.
And it will be reviewed.
Yep.
And, and I particularly, yeah, I particularly like that it will be reviewed periodically and hopefully improved, you know, fix things that we didn't notice or couldn't contemplate.
Okay, uh, new business?
I'm sorry, if I could recap with Scott real quick, how close did we get to the T-bid recommendation? Are we pretty close?
Uh, hold on just a second here. The T-bid, um, recommendation, so, uh, they did, they were interested in grandfathering and doing away with the three year period, um, so that's a difference. Um, they wanted to, uh, exclude the apartments, um, from the STR, uh, permits, uh, um, guidelines, so, you know, no, no apartments, uh, for STRs, um, and use the attrition, um, about it over three years. Um, they set the cap at 175, so you guys are consistent with that. Um, no co, no cap on home share and, uh, no cap on STRs in commercial zones. So, um, you, I think we're consistent with most of what they put together and then you added things, right? So, um, so, yeah, not too bad, other than, I mean, the big, the big difference is the grandfathering piece.
And then, and the council in their infinite wisdom will make that final decision.
So I think it paid the big bucks for it.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, item C, we have no new business. Item D, uh, I'm sure we have plenty of untended business, but none we're talking about tonight. Uh, E, uh, planning commissioner comments and future agenda items. Anybody have anything to say? Um, Scott, uh, do you have any comments or?
Um, I'm all out of comments.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, it's, nobody has anything else to, to add to this? We'll, uh, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled, um, planning commission meeting on September 15th, uh, 2020 at 6:00 PM, and this spot on your screen. So we'll see you there. You guys stay safe and thanks for all your work.
Yeah, thanks everybody for all your work tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Bye.
And Michael, I, no, I was going to say I hope his dog turned, is, is better.